Go ahead.
I'd like to introduce our teachers.
Yes, oh, right, our backs are to someone else as well. So, I'll let you do that. I mean, I think I have one of those by.
Sure.
Do you have one of them?
Yeah.
Okay, Townsend residence, okay. Townsend, yes.
So Elizabeth Brown, who actually has the brown shirt on.
Thank you, that's all right. Trying.
Uh, teaches mathematics mostly in eighth grade and Sarah Berger teaches English. She'll also in eighth grade and she is our literacy coach and they'll be presenting this evening.
Thank you. Welcome, glad to have you.
Appreciate you bringing me. Okay, revisions or corrections to the agenda? Oh, actually, I jumped right over you, Maya. Is there, is there any?
You stop.
Hardly.
No, you're participating as a public.
You are part of the meeting as you're here, so if I don't notice your hand up, you need to sort of either say something out loud or tell someone who's near you. I'll try.
That's fine.
Okay, revisions or corrections, if I have any?
The science department was unable to attend tonight and I look forward to their presentation at a future forum meeting.
Okay, so does that mean we're not going to be discussing the science results?
We can talk about the science results, but that was going, where it says teacher presentation, that part is not happening today.
Okay.
I'm missing this, if people would, it pays to be very loud.
Okay.
Does everybody hear that?
Hey?
Hey? Looking for. Um, okay. If there's no other corrections or revisions to the agenda. Correspondence, any correspondence? Um, I just had a, the letter from, I'll pass this around, but it's from the V S B A. To school board members and superintents, I guess you got it too? It's about the, I think it's about dues coming up. Due scale this year has been increased by 2.5% or an average of about $35 per school district in the state of Vermont. I'll pass this around, people can look at it, I just wanted to get it, can you hear that, Peter?
Yes, thank you.
You probably got this as well.
Uh, yeah, well, actually, we've already been invoiced for school board dues, so you might check on your, I did check to see who was paid in this particular cycle, but that's why you have your monthly report there. You can look under school board and see if dues have been paid or yet been paid.
I don't have a date on this.
It doesn't have an invoice there either, but.
They're in here.
It was in September, there was sent.
They're in here, okay, how much are they?
Right, yeah.
You have an idea?
I mean, it's based on.
Um, $2,028.36 if that's the dues, I'm not there yet, but.
Okay.
Um, it's based on size of your school.
Size of the school, yeah.
So, anyway, pass it around.
Yeah, for example, Townsend last night, it was 8:35 or something like that.
Right, so then we'd be more than that. I hope everybody, there's a little.
Do we draw that much benefit from them?
Uh, well.
I'm president of the V S B A, I'm gonna tell you help cares, but I mean, you tell me. I, we use them all the time.
I refer to them, and we go to the website, that's where we get our policies. You know, the most practical, day-to-day thing that happens, but, uh, no, that's where you get your legal counsel free of charge from Nicole May.
Well, that's, that's not actually the truth. We don't get legal counsel free of charge, we, they have a, they have a legal counsel that doesn't give legal advice, but does work for the V S B A and does give advice on his legal issues, but they're not our attorney, they're very careful about that.
But they can resolve or, you know, refer me to the law and so forth, so that we needn't, we needn't have recourse to additional legal advice.
There's quite a number of other, um, things that the S B A does over the years and it does list them in there.
They do the training.
They, not only do they do the training, but the regional meetings, if you didn't go, I guess you didn't go to the regional meeting that was here, I know Patty did and a number of us did go when it was there, but Ledgeless, Kelly was there, Joe.
They create collaborative opportunities too that you wouldn't have, that just seems to.
Lot of information.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they're a resource for, um, school districts who are going through things like South Burlington right now, which is a potential strike, or South Burlington's closed. Well, I didn't know if they voted, I, I mean, I know they're, they're out.
The kids are staying home, yeah.
But I don't know whether they've had a vote to strike or not, that's what Joe was just telling me, wasn't sure they voted to strike, but I, it's clear that there's, schools closed. So, anyway. All right, um, that was the only thing I had for correspondence. So it'll take us right into administrative reports. Principal first, Durin, thank you for emailing all of those items, including the updated. One, it's all just current order, you said.
Of course.
Ever break that?
I actually wonder if out of respect for the teacher's time to.
Easily do that.
Present first?
Yep. Great. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, if you, whenever you're ready, if you just wanna take a moment, maybe adjust your chairs so you can see us and the screen at the same time.
You and the screen at the same time.
Yes. Then we can. No, we have to do stuff and go on the internet.
All right.
All right, so the purpose for us being here is to give you guys kind of an idea of what the students are going to be asked to do in the spring, because it's no longer the kneecap, they're now taking the S back, which stands for smarter, balance, oh, I forgot, assessment consortium. Somebody didn't know what that meant, so if you hear somebody talking about smarter balance or S back, it's the same thing. Um, just a couple of things on math, you know, it's, it's different than the traditional test, it's a different mindset. It's all done on the computer. I mean, the kids can use scrap paper, but it is, it's all done on the computer. They're gonna need to use technology in order to make graphs and charts and explain things. They have to be able to drag and click and all different kinds of things that they didn't have to do before. Another, and we have some other differences between the S back and kneecap. They have to identify, usually if there was a choices, it would be all multiple choice. And I'm gonna show you a question today where it's actually multiple answers. Instead of just clicking one answer and that'd be the right one, they get to choose, say that there's many answers to one problem. So it's just, it's a whole different mindset of the test, of the test. So I just wanna show you a couple of examples, just to give you an idea of what the, what the kids might see. So this is an 11th grade. Test that we can't really see. Okay? And this is why it's gonna be a challenge, because technology, even when you think you have it under control, surprises you.
So go to a, uh, go over to your settings and see if you can get the monitor, if you program at 10:24, 7:50.
I don't know how to do that.
Help is on the way.
Yep, there you go. It's right there.
And when you, and when in doubt, you ask the youngest person in the room. Yeah. Did you run that one, the youngest person in the room? There you go, what did you say?
Well, yeah, he's just gonna judge it 10, 10:24, 7:50.
Seven below.
Well, I'm just saying, since you got that signal, it's worth a try.
So it is nice if something happens with the internet during the S back, the kids can just start the question right where they left off. They can just log right back in, so that's not gonna be a problem if some of our students know.
You can zoom back in.
So this one, so what's really, yeah, thanks. What's really nice about this problem is that they actually show the guy building the, um, the wall there, the beams. So it's a nice visual and that's why the students seem to like it. This is an 11th grade standard. What's challenging about this one, it's a multi-step problem and they have to explain how they found their answer. So the answer is no longer just good enough, they have to type an explanation with it. So I wanted you guys to see that one.
Uh, maybe, can everybody read it?
This is, the construction worker is using wooden beams to reinforce the back wall of the room. Determine the height in feet of the beam that ends at point G and explain how you found your answer. Okay. So that's seven, and if you guys want the answer, I think it's eight feet.
We can't see the dimensions. We probably couldn't do it in our heads anyway, right? So that raises a question, so students are allowed to write or do calculation elsewhere?
Yes.
On the screen, right?
Well, this is another one, yeah, 'cause you're gonna, they're gonna need to work things out. So, and that's okay, and I think that we're thinking about using clipboard, so they'll have scrap paper and something to write on. So, and this was the example I said, instead of multiple choice questions, it's now multiple answers. So they're saying, they're giving them an expression, 36x plus 24y, and you have to say if it's equivalent or not, and this is yes or no. And I think this might be a sixth grade. A sixth grade, yeah, so this is a sixth grade standard, so it's to say whether it's equivalent or not. So multiple answers for the same problem.
You say sixth grade?
This is sixth grade, yeah, I wanted to show you a seventh grade.
There you go, uh.
So this is, this is a seventh grade one, so this is more what we're interested in, we wanna grade, this would be the seventh grade one.
That's another one that's equivalent, yeah.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is another, I wanted to show you, I clicked on the sixth grade, I wanted to show you seventh grade.
No, that's fine, good, got a contrast there.
So similar problems.
We've got them in your heads, Hook.
I'm gonna show you one more of these.
It would take. Get that one.
We purposely did not give you the piece of payment.
We don't have time for doing this, yeah, but thank you.
And then this was when I was talking about the dragging and clicking, so this one, it's, you know, instead of just plotting points on a number line, this is also seventh grade. They first have to figure out what the points are, so they have these three down here, or these four down here. And then they have to drag them. Can anybody tell me what negative three and a half minus three and a half is?
Negative seven.
Oh, negative six and a half, seven, negative seven.
Yeah, somebody said zero, this one's zero.
I said zero, yeah, put that one in.
We'll put that one, so they'll have to drag it over.
Yeah, it's good people see this picture.
And then so they'll drag this one over here.
I did one with the dollar board where I had to drag trees.
Oh, drag trees. We're dragging them.
It's elementary.
So this one, you have to figure it out, this one goes over here. This one goes down. So this, so some of the new difference, of course, would be the dragging and moving. Um, I know that with my students, even though I tell them it doesn't have to, they think the zero has to go in the middle. So the challenge here would be that the zero is not in the middle. So that, so that's another challenge, and what was the other one I was thinking, oh, they marked negative three and a half. Kind of seemed a little random, um, but it still gives them an idea.
Tells them what, you know, what the value is, what the scale is.
Tells them the scale without listing everything else.
Yeah.
So there's a little challenge for our seventh graders. So on top of these tasks, there's also performance tasks, and I was gonna show you just one of those. So I've seen two types of performance tasks so far. I've seen them where they give you, where they've given the kids a table and a graph and about five or six question that goes, that goes with it. So that's one type of performance task that I've seen. And then this one, they, I haven't found a seventh and eighth grade performance task like, like this, but this would be a sixth grade task, where they start out with a classroom activity. So they have one teacher and I don't, I'm just a classroom of students. And they start out and they have this context, where the teacher sets the context, in this case, it's a field trip. And they just start asking the teacher, the teacher starts asking the students questions like, what field trips have you been on? Family trips, what were the other ones? Oh, youth group trips, so it just kinda gets the kids started talking about trips that they've taken with either their family or other students. And then it goes on to say, what are some places you would like to go on a field trip? And they list them on the board and they keep asking questions like, what would be fun? What would you like to do? What was best about your past trips? And they keep this discussion going and they have this whole list. And then, there's a lot of words here, but it's just, you know, let's, then they say, okay, well, let's assume your class is going on a field trip, what would we have to do, what would, you know, what would the funding look like? How would you decide how to go on a field trip? So you have, you spend this whole, and I'm not exactly sure how much time, my understanding is just a class period to go over this. And then sometime later, that's what I'm not clear on exactly when later, maybe the next day?
I might be able to answer that question, there's set times, at least on the ones for the English that we'll be looking at, so class discussion might be 20 to 40 minutes, and then there's an activity period, and then there's a writing period, which I assume in the math would be an actual problem or series of problems. So there's set times for these, and I think the idea is that you do have a test day where this happens in like a 170 or 70 minute chunk of time, is my understanding for the English, I assume.
So it all happens in the same day?
Yes, I believe so.
So there's your, so there's, so then the performance task is, okay, well, we're gonna give you three of these places. So we're gonna say, okay, there's your school, you have three choices to go to. Now you, now the students have to, on their own, after having all that discussion and input, they have to answer their own questions. They're given a fake, you know, a fake class and what their first and second choice was, just like they did in their own class. So that's just other kids' names, other data. And so they have to answer questions like, okay, well, based on the results of the class vote, where would you recommend the class go on this field trip? And again, it says show your work and explain how you found an answer, so they really are gonna have to do a lot of explaining on this test. They give them some more information, distance, bus fare, entrance fare, and some more information. And then they need to finish it, so they say not think about the cost of the trip. How much will each student pay to go on each trip? You have to show your work, you can't just give them a number, you have to explain, they have to explain how they got it and, or show their work. And then somebody says one thing, was it Daniel? Says that going to the zoo is only 2.50 a person, do you agree or disagree with this guy?
That's an argumentative writing piece on a math test.
Yeah, that's different, for sure. And then the, I love number four, I think this is great. Write a short note to your teachers stating where you think the class should go, based on all the things you've evaluated, all the different factors, the student vote, the cost, the distance, and what you think would be fun. So I think that's a great part, 'cause they get to end it with everything they've learned and sum it all up with a note to the teacher. So that's what a performance task in math is gonna look like.
And you're writing on the computer.
And that's the big thing, that's the new thing, I'm writing on the computer. All right. I would go, I think you can, as soon as I find it. So, and there's a quote I put on here, it said, boy, "Performance tasks are extended activities that measure the student's ability to integrate knowledge and skills across multiple standards." I think that pretty much summed it up perfectly for what we just explained. This is gonna ask students, we said, multiple questions on one set of data. And like I said, I've, I've seen two different sets of them. There's new stuff coming out every day still for the S back. So we are checking the internet and all kinds of things every day and we're getting emails from people, so we're staying on top of it as best that we can.
Thanks, Elizabeth, and we're gonna have a Q and A at the end, so if there's anything that you're really burning to ask, some of my, the English stuff might answer this question.
Let's talk some English, yeah.
So, the English test resembles a standard test more, I think, than the math does. The only difference is that there's a lot of interacting with the text, like, click on the two sentences in this passage that support your claim about the author's intent, things like that. Again, uh, multiple questions, like multiple answers, so which two sentences do not have any grammatical mistakes? Similar to the math. Um, and some of the texts here are actually videos or audios. I actually did a practice test today for eighth grade and there were two audio clips. We were just listening to a clip from a documentary or what have you. Uh, again, the performance task, I think this is probably the most innovative part of the S back and I've spent a lot of time looking at this, we actually had a workshop here on Friday just about this. It's designed to measure writing skills, critical thinking, discussion skills, research skills, combining multiple sources from that research and understanding bias. And this starts with the seventh grade. So this is a sample performance task, there's actually a 15-page PDF. It looks like the one Elizabeth showed you, but 15 pages, and that's actually what the teacher will get, is that packet and you almost have a script that you go through. So example, in part one, there'd be a 20-minute discussion where you would share visual stimuli such as charts, a photo of the Three Mile Island power plant, and have a discussion where you're trying to get everyone to understand these two things, that we produce electricity, that it's controversial. Then students have 50 minutes to do research and also use the notes that they took during the debate. And all of these notes are done on scratch paper, they're not part of what is graded. So here would be an example, it's sort of hard to see, but this was in the PDF. This is a screenshot of a Google search for nuclear power frozen cost. So students need to be able to look at a variety of sites, figure out what's valid, what's invalid, what's useful, what's not. After they've spent some time doing this, part three would be a full-length argumentative report where they pretend to be a senator's aide drafting an opinion brief about nuclear power. This is an 11th grade test, okay? They may use their notes and the visual stimuli from part one. So there's a lot of layers to an 11th grade English performance task. So, oops, I was gonna show you guys. Here's some sample items from the test, just to give you an idea. There's a story, I believe this is the eighth grade, and you can see up here, this is how the interface will work for the students. Click on two phrases from the paragraph that help you understand the meaning of scar. I had to stop and think about that myself.
Because the paragraph's on the left.
So this is the entire text.
Yeah.
This question only focuses on this passage, so.
You only drag from that passage.
Right, let's say that I, for whatever reason, I want to read this entire story, but this section is on, I can't, if I want it to be the full screen, I can do that. I can also flag a question, which means when I'm done my test, I can go back and see the questions I flagged and get a second shot at answering them, which is really key. So right here, I sort of went with dirt scuffs and, uh, it's a hard one, dog bite marks, I guess. Um, there's also, actually, that one's not, unfortunately, is not showing up, but.
So in the test, uh, you'd click that, when you're, if you don't have a submit button, you just have a click to go to the next one.
Next, the writing, the writing pieces that I've seen, there is a submit button. So here's an 11th grade one, it's a nonfiction text about diamonds in the sky. Read the sentence that answered the question. Nano-diamonds are stardust created when ancient stars exploded long ago, disgorging their remaining elements into space. Based on the context of the sentence, what is the most precise meaning of disgorging? Again, a lot of layers.
What grade is this?
This is an 11th grade. So, just in the interest of time, you can see the English is a little bit more traditional than the math, but I encourage you all to definitely go to this website, you can play around and see what they look like at different grades. You can see some of these are not here, they only do speaking and listening at the elementary school. So now I'll go and tell you guys what we're doing to prepare. So all the faculty are doing professional development around the performance task. Uh, we've done a lot about English so far this year. And then through the Vermont Curriculum Leaders Association, we've been going to meetings with the Agency of Education about the S back. There was a general one in October, I'm going to an English-specific one in December.
The math-specific is until like in February. Um, yeah, I will say that it's really great, because we went to the Vermont Curriculum Leaders and it was the head guy of Vermont that was, that's in charge of assessment, that was speaking. So now we get emails from the Vermont Curriculum Leaders, and I actually had a question for him the other day, his name's Michael Hawk, and he actually emailed me back to answer questions, which was amazing to me, that he would take time out to answer my questions. So if you guys have any questions I can't answer, I feel very good that we can email him.
I should say, there's a lot of questions that nobody can answer, even at the state level. I think when we went to that meeting, maybe the biggest surprise was that we thought we were really prepared and we were with like curriculum directors and with stuff that we knew about. Oh, performance task, uh-oh, what are those?
So then, but what we're concerned is, we wanna know how it's gonna go with the students and the computers and everything, so what we're doing is the Data Recognition Corporation field test. So we're doing it as well as the elementaries in the SU. And it's a field test, it's not, S back isn't putting it on, but it's similar to the S back and the technology is very similar. And the seventh and eighth grade English and math teachers have agreed to do it, and it's free. And it's a 10-hour-long test for the math and then a two-hours-long for the English. And what's it gonna do is, they're gonna give us our raw scores, so we have an idea of how the students are doing on these questions. And they're also gonna, I saw, I heard, read this differently, and they said, technology readiness. And I thought it meant how ready the students were for the technology, but suddenly corrected me and said, no, it was how our computers were ready for the test. So I was a little confused by that, in my knowledge.
And so when the kids take this in the spring, they'll have had the experience of doing it, not to the full extent of like, what it'll be like, the actual S back is much longer, but it won't be completely alien.
The meaning is important. Oh, just the other thing we're doing, I'm going to the Vermont Council Teachers of Mathematics Conference on Friday, it's in Burlington, and there's many S back workshops there, I think I counted three on the list for the day, so I'll definitely be going to those to learn some more stuff. So are there any questions, specific or just?
I'd like to give you a round of applause, I think this is incredible, the clarity of your, your doing to us and what you've done is amazing. It's, I, I got one quick question, it seems there's a tremendous layer of science, math, English, all the departments are working together in a way that's very rewarding, I think.
Absolutely.
That's part of the, yeah, I keep hearing, I keep hearing the nuclear power and English and it's all crossing over, which is very exciting.
I do think the performance task of all the standardized tests I've seen in my career, and I've seen a lot of them, is, I think it's a great tool to assess instruction and student learning, but it's gonna be tricky.
How long has this S back conference been around, is it brand new?
Brand new.
So it hasn't been tried in any school district before?
There was a field test last spring, and I can't remember the number.
Dover, Dover, 28 schools or so in Vermont actually piloted this, they were chosen based on their demographic and size and their criteria. And then Dover got in because they had such great scores, they weren't, but what happens, if you did that, you didn't have to take the kneecap test. So, but anyway.
Other states are at different levels.
Other states did different, yeah, are different, but this is the first time that, you know, the S back will be administered universally through the state of Vermont.
All public.
Yeah, it's the spring, Matt and Lakefront.
So how many states have that to state Vermont?
About, about half the states in the country are doing S back to a S back auditor and the other half are doing parks. Parks, I was gonna say.
Just parks.
Yeah, that's park.
So how do we have enough computers for everyone to do things?
So the nice thing here is that instead of the, being like kneecap week, as my, the best of my knowledge, there's a window in which we can test, so we can stagger it. So, and I have to say, Kevin and Peter, I think when I, we've been in touch with them about this since the very beginning and they feel very prepared and I definitely, they're extremely professional, so I don't, I think we're well ahead on the tech end. I met a woman, her, and her school only had Chromebooks, they had one-to-one Chromebooks, but you can't run this on a Chromebook. So they were very concerned, it's gonna be hard for a lot of schools.
Yeah, you've invested in a wide bandwidth on your optic fiber network, so, you know, we got the highway to be able to drive all this data and it is obviously back and forth with the cloud and the student, and it is asynchronous, so in fact, you don't have to have all the students, or even a whole class of students, do the whole test at the same time. That really alleviates a lot of problems about absenteeism, or you're sick, temporarily sick or whatever, anyway. That's, uh, you know, there's a way for this, through that window, to get everybody universally assessed at a, at a pace and a rate and a, you know, least stressful, uh, time constraint.
And all the kids are gonna have individual usernames and passwords, so when they log off, and whenever they come back, they just log back on and they're right where they're. they left off, none of their questions are lost.
They'll see all the flags if they want to get back to them.
Well, and that's interesting that you said that, because you can't always, at least on the math part, they're actually set up in chunks of...
Yeah, you can't go to the whole test.
You can't go, you can't go back to the whole test, but I think it's after five or six questions, they ask you if you're sure, and then you can go back and to any of your flagged ones, but once you pass that set of five or six, you can't go back to them, you're just going to keep moving on.
So it's important for the kids to listen and read the fine print.
Yes, and make sure that they're sure they want to go, leave those five questions.
Can I ask the students what they feel, how they feel this compares to the kneecaps that they already take?
I mean, I'm going to be the only one here who's going to be taking the S-Back, and it seems more challenging than the kneecaps, kneecaps seem much more straightforward, and they're, like, questioning and then multiple-choice answers, but it's going to be interesting to see what they're going to ask us to do.
How do you feel inside the computer? How is that, does it bother you?
Yeah, I think that's cool, I think it's a good thing that we're getting kind of way more used to dealing with computers a lot, because that's definitely a big part of our future.
Yeah.
Very good point.
Yeah.
It is, is it, I forget the word that Michael Hawke used, but the easier question, harder question thing, is that not a function of the test?
That is.
This is important when we're looking at, like, the data that we're going to get, it's like, if you take the GRE online, or I believe maybe the SAT is like this, if you take it online, if you get a hard question right, you get a harder question, if you get it wrong, you get an easier question. That's not necessarily every question, but in chunks. So what we were told, and of course, take this with a grain of salt, because this is from the agency who's already bought into doing this test, they said that kids would get less stressed out by it, like, a student who wasn't doing very well would not be taking a test that just got progressively harder until they can't do the last fifteen questions and are upset, that it might be a slightly more, I think they use the word humane testing experience.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, that kind of testing is called adaptive testing, and so it adapts to the test, the person who's being tested, and, and, and we do have firsthand experience in this SU, early elementary schools, and the MAPS test, which is an adaptive test, and I know when this, when I was here, and the seventh and eighth graders did it, you know, they reported that regardless of, you know, the student's achievement, I asked a variety of students, and they all said, "Yeah, it seemed like a pretty fair test," and the ones who were, you know, the high flyers thought, "Yeah, that was a pretty challenging test," the ones that would be struggling said, "Yeah, well, it was pretty fair, I was able to answer some, you know, questions." And what that does is it's, it's going to show, be able to show growth for the individual student over time vis-à-vis the spectrum of standards we're talking about, the achievement levels we're talking about, eventually K through twelve. That's really the, why this is worth the investment, from the state's point of view.
It will, but it'll only go down to grade levels, so a seventh grader, the lowest type of question they'll get would be a fifth-grade question.
Yeah, there's something...
So there's a limit, there's a limit to how low, or how high it'll go, it'll only go two higher as well.
So all of our students are specific grades?
Seventh, eighth, and eleventh.
Seventh, third, and eleventh.
And I believe me, I don't know, this one's a third.
Three.
I think it's three, seven, eight.
Three, six.
Yeah, three, six.
Three, six.
Three, six, seven, eight, and what?
Oh, three, am I right?
Three, no, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Eleven.
Somehow the ninth is, you know, okay, oh.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I wanted to mention a couple of other things about what Sarah and Elizabeth have been doing. First of all, Elizabeth has been really looking into the readiness of our students and teachers for taking or administering the test respectively, and the, as mentioned, our IT staff have put in a lot of hours getting these laptops ready for this DRC test, and, but Elizabeth is working with her colleagues and is going to be observing very carefully what our students do on that practice test, to see what skills they need to be taught in order to be able to take the test properly come spring. And Sarah, to her credit, just completed teaching a one-day workshop that was attended by Lila and Gray teachers, as well as two people who paid to come from outside of our district, one from all the way upstate New York, that was a workshop specifically on how to teach the performance task assessment, which you just saw, so I want to thank them both for that very important work. It is also a professional goal for all of our teachers to have the performance assessment task as part of their, their teaching in their curriculum this year. So all of our students will have exposure in a variety of subject areas to having multiple sources presenting of information, presenting, representing the different points of view, having accurate citations, and writing an argumentative, or they call it informative explanatory piece of writing. So it's just other ways that we're trying to get in this assessment, which I think is, in terms of the performance task itself, a very good interplay of interdisciplinary knowledge. So they're not skills only for this test, but when I was meeting with the AP social, AP history teacher, Joe Toll, when I was describing the performance test assessment task, he said, "Oh, it's a DBQ," which is, do you want to explain that that is, Jamie? Now, what's a DBQ?
A DBQ, a document-based question, where you're posed with a question, and then maybe seven or eight documents, like historical documents from, like, within a timeframe, and you have to draw from those documents and cite them in your response in order to get a good score.
Excellent.
So I called it a baby Q.
What's the total length of the test?
Eight hours.
Yeah, I was going to say eight hours.
This is English?
English and math together, yeah, for both.
The performance task alone, I think the eleventh-grade performance task is a hundred and seventy minutes. But there are, there's also going to be some scheduling that Peter and Kevin are going to do around that.
Also, the difference with this test is it's, anybody can take as long as they want, so they're estimating eight hours, it could take some people less, and it could take some students more, just depending, because it's, it's, it is not, since it's not a time test, we can take however long we want.
There's also, for our specialized students, I've been speaking with the department about this, there's amazing accommodations that they can access, so that there's talk to text and text to talk, so students will just have their headphones on, and they can have so many different accommodations depending on their level of need and what's in their plan. So it's going to make, I think, the testing perhaps easier for a specialized department.
Well, more importantly, it's going to more accurately assess the ability and the skills of the special needs student, because ordinarily, taking the traditional test, there was no way to accommodate or be able to assess where they were, you know, in terms of their achievement level over time. Most of the time, they just got lousy scores. You know, the difference between a one and a one in two years, it doesn't tell you anything.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If you guys do have any questions, feel free to email, or if you were interested, I, we were talking to the tech guys earlier, and they said if anybody wants to come in and take a practice test, you said, "If you would send you guys..."
Yeah, I'll set you right up.
Then you said, "Make sure you tell them," but seriously, if you guys have any questions, whatsoever, please don't hesitate, just let us know.
Is this PowerPoint out to the board in some ways? I mean, in other words, you have a link on the PowerPoint that they could click on and probably get them to the site.
Yes, or if you, if you Google S-Back, just the acronym, S-B-A-C, you'll first see their stock price, and then a link to the practice test.
Yeah, because, because the PowerPoint really doesn't have any response on it, you have to go online back to the sample. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I really appreciate you doing that.
Would you want to check in the back? Uh, it will not be easy.
Okay. Well, that was interesting. We've been talking about them for a long time, I wonder. Okay, so, um, before we get jumping in, somebody else has to do those, okay, somebody has to volunteer to do the closing pay orders? And I just got an email from Howie saying he wasn't going to make it tonight, so I just wanted to let you all know that. Principal's report.
Okay.
Go ahead.
How about I start with the, the report before we get to the data, is that all right?
Yes, it is.
I want to make sure we move along here.
Okay, well, there's only one part of the report that I would like to emphasize, well, two, but one is just to be aware of the timeline for the planning of the 2015-16 school budget, which is on page three, it's a chart on there with dates, and Bud and Stephen have seen these before, I shared them with the faculty as well, but if you have any questions about those dates, please let me know. Yes, mean a lot. I had come to Stephen and Emily before with questions regarding dual enrollment, which is really growing at our school. I have a quote at the beginning, going back to page one, where a parent had said to me, "My child's taking all APs in duels this year," which I hadn't, a term I hadn't heard before, to refer to dual cred, dual-credit or dual enrollment as an AP at that level. So that was pretty exciting. We called around to about eight different schools in Vermont, asking them what they were doing about the third class, because this year, the state of Vermont is funding the additional fee required for students to be able to get college credit for the high school classes they're taking here. This does not, what I'm referring to does not include the college courses they're taking at CCV or UVM online, which is a higher fee, as you see here, but I'm really kind of stuck right now, because I'm not sure what to do, in that we have students taking a third course, they're only allowed two before they graduate high school, so maybe two in their junior year, or one if each of them are junior or senior, but I have seniors who are enrolled in their third dual enrollment class, and it could be as many as four that they would be taking before they graduate. And they're not expect, they're not anticipating that they would be charged an E P, but by the end of the semester, I think I'm going to get a bill for any additional courses above the two. And when I met with Bud, our financial officer, about this, he said, "Well, you're talking about very little money," because I said, "Well, it's probably no more than ten courses we'd be talking about, so it would only be about one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars." And he says, "Well, you know, it doesn't sound like a whole lot, it sounds like not a bad thing to do," and I said, "Well, I'm really worried about the implications of this, because how about in the future? And is this for all students, or is this just for students who come from a low-income family, that where they're eligible for free or reduced meals?" And so I really come to the board, because this has budget considerations, not very much for this year, about fifteen hundred dollars, but absolutely for next year, because we do have to build into our budget according to the Act 77, that this is the second year that there's dual enrollment legally obliging, but next year, it's the local schools that have to flip the bill, and so I'm anticipating budgeting nine thousand dollars next year just for two credits, sorry, two courses per student. So if we were to say, "Oh yes, you can do a third and fourth, even if they're low-income," well, then we might have to be thinking about increasing that to, you know, fifteen thousand. The really great thing is that the students are doing it, and they're requesting it, they want it, and I added a statistic in here about the University of Vermont somewhere in here, and I actually, is that actually made it in here?
It's right on the first, it's right on the bottom of the first.
Okay, great. So I actually learned from Melanie that the statistic was different, because I was, I was going off memory on this, but the, of course, I don't even know if I have it written here, but the jump of graduation rates from seventy-five to eighty-three percent at UVM, which they believe is a result of dual enrollment, that kids are coming in with credits, so they, they graduate faster, that is, within four years, and, but it's even greater, it's like a, it's like sixty-five percent to eighty-five percent, so much, it's a bigger margin. So, go ahead, Mike.
This is the purpose for our existence, we make a motion that we pay...
We don't even know what we're being asked to pay yet, at this point in time.
Some of us don't care.
Well, I appreciate that you don't care, but I would imagine the taxpayers would like to know exactly what we're talking about here.
I want to say return.
I haven't heard a second, you're certainly...
I'll second, just for the purpose of discussion.
Okay. So I'm not sure what the motion is exactly, was it to pay it?
We pay the cost, whatever comes up.
And is that regardless of the student, in other words, a universal approach?
Yes.
Okay, fine. That answers every question that Durin had, I think, is it?
Well, would it be for all students? Would it be for students eligible for free or reduced meals?
He just said for all students.
For all students, I'm sorry, okay. I'm sorry, I was reading at the same time.
And it was Lyndle who seconded it?
Yeah.
And you understood what you were seconding now?
Yes.
Okay, you have a question?
I just wanted to get it to discuss. My, one concern is, it seems a relatively small amount, but are there other areas that we will be looking at that will equally need small amounts of board approval for payment? That's hard to answer, that's a ridiculous question, but I'm seeing it as, looking at it as a small amount now, but it's one piece of the operation of the school, are there other small piece?
Unanticipated costs.
There you go. That we might be asked to, I mean, do we need to put it in a perspective of a larger picture?
Yeah.
We do, in general, yeah. It seems small, the amount, but I'm just a little concerned that, what's the big picture?
I think that there's always unanticipated costs that come up, by their definition, they're unanticipated, but I think that putting ourselves out to support the students who are high-achieving, who are working extra hard and going through these AP and dual enrollment classes, it, to me, I'm with Mike, it's a no-brainer for us to fund it and to encourage them, so that even the small amount of a hundred and fifty dollars should not be perceived as a, as an extra cost to the family. So I'm, or are we behind it?
Durin, could you fill us in on what other schools are doing?
They're not paying for it. The technical centers, for the, from what I understand, have a grant, so for example, Otter Valley, they had the third, one student to take the third course, but the, the career centers have been able to, they have the funding for it, so it positions them in a better place. But the, the school, very few schools were, got back to us, so of the eight or so that we contacted, we only heard from four of them, and Brannaville, from what I understand, it's for low-income students, that the scholarship exists out of their local budget.
I was struck by that information as I was reviewing this, that that, first of all, it makes a lot of sense, and second of all, that makes us look really good as we look at getting more and more students to come here, so I was interested that other schools are not just paying for it.
It's about money.
Cool, yeah.
Patty?
How much would these courses cost the kids if they had to wait and take them when they go to college?
Three, four hundred dollars a credit.
UVM is seventeen seventy-three for a three-credit course, not in part if you're taking independently continuing education.
So these are, we're comparing a three hundred and thirteen dollar to the seventeen hundred dollar?
Well, no, because that's for one credit.
With the additional fact that taking these courses in high school opens doors.
Right.
That would not otherwise be open if they had to take them in college.
But, right, and I mean, the, the reason behind dual enrollment, part of the reason behind dual enrollment is to be able to expose students who may be first-generation college attendees, families, that coming from families that maybe wouldn't, you know, hadn't been to college and wouldn't consider it a option necessarily, and I'm hoping that's what we're seeing, that we're getting, we're, you know, as kids are showing interest in taking dual enrollments, I hope it isn't all just, you know, the high achievers, but the, it's across the spectrum of our student body, that all students are feeling comfortable and encouraged, and, because this is really what we want... that all students are feeling comfortable and encouraged and, because this is really what we want. We want a higher college attendance for kids when they leave Lillina Gray. Not just the ones who go to college to be successful and be able to do it in less time because they've just got some credits at high school level. This is to open opportunities for children who may not have ever had those opportunities.
What we call first generation.
It's more cost-effective for these kids to take as many of these as, again, in high school that work into a program and.
But, well, it's part of the reason why.
Make it affordable for college.
It's part of the reason why I would assume schools are saying, you know, for the free and reduce, we'll pay for those, so we want to encourage those, but we're not trying to stop anyone else. But with money being as tight as it is right now, all across the state, you know, there's got to be limits somewhere.
We certainly have a chance as a board to address this issue again when the budget, proposed budget for FY16 rolls around and we get some clearer projected figures about expense. We could ask the students what they think in terms of participation, whether the participation rate now is, is about indicative of what could happen or whether it would be expected to increase, you know, just from the subtle but on campus. It might be interesting to hear your, your, you know, projection. Got any ideas? Do you have thoughts?
Honestly, I don't really know if a lot of people will take dual enrollment. So like, I wouldn't have too much of an idea on, like, an opinion on it.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of going to like the Career Center in Brattleboro to pursue a type, like, if this is still talking about the same thing, like Career Center or Advanced Placement courses, I feel like going to the Career Center for some kids is really great because they get to learn skills that can help them, you know, get a foot, like a leg up in college or whatever career they want to pursue. And as far as Advanced Placement goes, there's been steady increases in people taking these courses. Like where the AP US History class was like three or four kids in the past, you know, now it's like, it was like seven or eight, nine?
It's larger than.
Yeah, it's thirteen.
It's fifteen.
I'm in that class, the AP Calculus class is seven now, in the past it's been like one or two. There were like ten or eleven kids that could have taken that class, that chose to maybe take it next year because they were so advanced already that they couldn't afford to wait a year to take it.
Yeah. My AP Physics class, that's like fifteen people in it right now.
You get to a certain point in high school, you know, with the advanced, advancing of kids out of middle school that they're getting more time to work with, you know, there's a lot of elective credits that, are they valuable? Sure, but are they going to get you a leg up in the school you want to go to or the career you want to pursue or advance your skills now or, I don't think so. I think that these Advanced Placement courses will help a lot of kids pursue the subject that they're interested in and keep going with it.
Any other concerns?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think that the elective courses are also really valuable in a student's high school career, for sure. But I agree with Evan and Yulian when they say that like, it seems like a lot more people are taking advantage of AP credits and dual enrollment credits. They're going off of it. I don't know, feels good, you know. I feel like I've lost sight of what we're trying to talk about though.
Well, yeah. This is, Bud, just to explain though, this is, this was not an expense in the budget. So the reason why the administration's bringing it to the board is to make sure that ordinarily we can use the budget, you know, as it's, as the plan. And when we move outside of the budget to something that's considered kind of an extraordinary cost, then we should inform the board.
Such as the extra dual.
That's right.
Absolutely.
That's why we're, you know, it's.
Deficit spending is what it is, you either ask them to take it out of another area of the budget or you.
Yeah, and we'll still try to work this within the budget. But I, you know, I think Doreen and I are both concerned about making sure that the board and the public's involved in the discussion so that if the projected numbers keep increasing, the cost will continue to increase. So we have to put that in our planning for the budget with that vision 2020, right? To, you know, that, that's, that's the purpose of opening this discussion. And I don't think we need to belabor it too long, it's.
Next, okay.
Yeah.
Mike, you have a question, or go, go to Maya.
Well, mine wasn't actually a question, I was going to say that we are by definition an educational institution. I, that's our responsibility to pay for shit like that, stuff like that. I think that if we need to start charging for participation in things, it should be those things that are outside of our core.
Such as?
Such as sports, drama, music.
So you don't consider sports, drama, and music as part of what our requirements are to provide?
Those things that are outside of school hours are outside of our core.
So you're saying extracurricular then?
Yeah. I'm saying if we're not going to pay for things like this, we might as well shut the lights off, pan walk to front door, go home.
I just wanted to make the comment that I think it's fantastic that the board is supporting this. And I just would be shocked if there was a taxpayer that would say, "Oh, no, we're not going to support students who want to learn and continue their education and, and, you know, go after something better." I think it's fantastic and it's really exciting for me to hear that the board's supporting this.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead.
Not to belabor the point, but later on we're going to talk about the school board vision. The first item on the vision is to provide an environment where all students are driven by their aspirations and engaged in their learning without being limited by the circumstances.
So I would just, I'm just going to have to just say one comment, if you don't mind.
No.
That we are facing some serious challenges here and there's not one word I have heard that I don't support. Not one word. Except when it comes to the fact that we need to face the fact that we have limited funds. And somewhere along the line, there is going to be an end and we will not be able to support some area. Now, if this is more important, as Mike's saying, in his mind it is, then that's fine. But I just would caution everyone to think very seriously about every penny we spend, not every thousand dollars. We need to be looking very, very seriously because we have some serious challenges coming. And, and you see it when you look at our, our financial, our financial report. We've run a deficit for several years in a row. We know we have added expenses coming on us that we don't have necessarily budgeted for. We certainly haven't planned on many of the expenses that we're going to be facing. We also have serious declining in enrollment and we know that the tax rate will go up regardless of whether we level fund or not if our enrollment is declining. So, and, and I mean, there's an argument to every side of that. Sure, there's, if we're offering more dual, full-paid dual enrollment courses, maybe we'll get more tuition students. Maybe our enrollment will go up, it's possible. But I would just, I'm just suggesting that everyone keep in mind the financial challenges that we are facing and because of it, our taxpayers are facing it and they are going to have a challenge. And, and we need to be able to present a budget that the taxpayers can support. And while I agree that there's probably, most taxpayers in concept support that, but there's a lot of taxpayers out there who are deciding whether they can stay in their homes or not because of property tax rates being so high. So it gets a lot more serious than that and I would just, you know, ask to keep that in mind. The second thing I just want to suggest is that, that we find a way to make sure, and whether it's through this motion or not, I don't see it in this motion, but we make sure that the, the purpose, which I've already spoken about of this, these dual enrollments are not necessarily only for targeted for a specific area of student. I want to make sure and, and we need to see, you know, the outcomes of this and the, the feedback, that our students, it really is broadening the number of students in school who are accessing, whether it's the dual enrollment or the Advanced Placement. Because we have a lot of students, we, we, last year's graduation rate was scary. You know, the dropout rate was really frightening at Lillina Gray. And there's a segment of our population at Lillina Gray that we need to make sure we are reaching. And so while I, I think that, you know, the intent of the dual enrollment is to find a way to reach out, it needs to be more broad than that, so that, that's the only other thing I would comment on, so. And are there any other questions or comments because we have a motion on the floor?
Well, I, I sort of agree with you. I, I looked at this earlier and thought that, you know, tying it to the free and reduced lunch to try and tie in a grant and, and help find some funding would be, would be opportune. I'm not sure, you know, I'm, there's, there's a separation here too, right? AP is one thing, dual enrollment is another, right?
Two separate things.
AP doesn't cost us money, dual enrollment does cost us money.
It, it will cost us money next year and it could cost us money this year.
Which could.
Dual enrollment.
Dual enrollment, dual enrollment is the only one that has a cost attached.
But you get two courses free, don't you?
Right, and you get two courses free, I, I understand. And most of the schools that responded to us currently only pay for two courses and then you're on your own after that. Or the career centers are not grant funding this. So, I don't know, I just, I, I worry that we do set a dangerous precedent if we just say, you know, "Nope, we'll pay for that" because of what Emily does say, you know, we, this money has to be found somewhere. And as the budget number shrinks, you know, you know, is it, is that, is this really, is the benefit really there? I mean, for, for the students who are taking the third or fourth dual enrollment course, is there really benefit there for them that, you know, outweighs all the benefit that this money could do somewhere else who, you know, are looking to find that money somewhere? Because it is deficit spending and, you know, it goes into the budget plan next year at, what, $9,000 or more?
That's what I'm anticipating.
Yeah. And we budgeted how much for it this year?
Oh, we didn't need to.
We didn't, we didn't need to budget this, that's right, okay.
Right, that wasn't the expectation from the state, so there's an A.
No.
And the cost is very small.
I'm just not, I'm not sure, you know, carte blanche on dual enrollment is necessarily the best way to spend our money.
Yep.
Just to clarify where we're at. So we're not talking about necessarily saying, yes, we're going to put this in the budget. We can have that discussion at budget time.
We can read the motion back. Well, I mean, the motion right now is to support paying for all dual enrollment that are requested, basically.
For this year.
Do we have to, do we have to program that?
I don't think, Mike didn't limit it to this year, I don't believe.
That was what we were talking about here, right? Where we go from there is.
You can read the motion back, I, that didn't say, that didn't have a time specific, but. Could you read the motion back, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Howard proposed the board pay these additional costs, Lyndle seconded it. Mike? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Can we amend it to be specific?
It needs to say additional costs for dual enrollment at least.
If that's not clear enough, we can amend it to say this year.
I mean, I don't care, I just want to know what we're voting on here because I'm unsure we're talking.
In my mind, we redo the budget every year and there's nothing that's permanent.
Mike's motion was to fund the additional costs of dual enrollment.
Dual enrollment, right, dual enrollment courses.
Courses.
But he's willing to amend it, which I would, every year. To this year.
Patty?
Didn't I hear Mike say that?
Limit it to, if you want? Or anybody can.
I, I think to be very clear because I'd, I'd like to talk about this at budget time, you know, and have time to consider it. Doreen maybe can bring us some more information.
So there was a specific dollar amount asked for, for, you know, anticipated that the need was going to be this year, $1,430 this year, up to $1,500.
Right.
So that wasn't what Mike made a motion for. But I mean, Mike can, you know, you could change your motion, somebody could amend it, you can do whatever you want, it's up to you. But the motion was much more general than that, it didn't have a time specific or a dollar amount on it.
I just wanted to clarify before we voted what it was all about.
So we need to make an amendment.
Is it needed for this year outside of the projected budget? No, there's totally.
Yes.
It is, okay. So it, to talk about a budget time is.
Doreen's anticipating the possibility of $1,430 needed additionally for this year for kids who want to take more, another, a third dual enrollment course.
Mike, are you, are you willing to amend it to this year?
I'm willing to amend it to this year.
I mean, you can do it for, is that an official amendment or you want to just do a friendly amendment and change your motion to, to say 20?
Yeah, whatever Peter.
Which up to you completely.
For FY15, just add to that, Peter, for FY15.
So you can even add the dollar amount if you choose, but.
I didn't have the impression that that was $10.
Uh, yeah, you can't, it's going to be hard to say.
Well, you can say what Doreen had said was.
Yeah, you could limit it to up to $1,430 if you want.
She said, you know, just $1,400, okay. So the motion now says, Mike made a motion to fund the dual enrollment for, the additional dual enrollment cost for 15, FY15? Is that correct?
Yeah, FY15. So that's what you have there, Peter? Yes. Can I?
Is that your second?
Do you want $1,430 mentioned?
No.
No.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the motion that's on the floor?
And who seconds?
I did, I did.
Lyndle did, one of you, you had your hand up, did you? Sorry. I was trying to get back to you, but we kind of got away.
Do you want to second it? You can. Oh, that's right.
Done.
Okay, you ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to fund the dual enrollment, additional need for dual enrollment in FY15, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Anything else, Doreen?
Uh, thank you, that was the only thing that I needed some direction on.
It was a big one.
Yep.
Are we, I honestly, we've got a lot on this agenda tonight and these science scores have to have a conversation at some point. And since the staff couldn't come, we, we can push it off. If somebody has questions, I mean, you've received them. You, you should ask the question now and I, and I'm, I'm assuming that we will have a report on this with the science, is that correct?
I'm hoping that, that it can still happen, you know, the November meeting is some time away. But I will work with them to see if, if they're able to do it. And if you would like to postpone the fuller conversation to a subsequent meeting, that's fine.
I, I would rather we didn't postpone it, but I don't see how we have a lot of choice if we don't. And we've got a huge agenda and we don't have the science teachers here to answer specifics if someone has them. On the other hand, Doreen can answer any questions that, that we may have, I'm sure. But I, I hope that we'll have a conversation about this because these test scores are not good. And I think we need to come around and say, what are we doing and what's our plan? Patty?
Um, what I'd like to see at some point is if we can, again, and maybe this has already been done, compare the same, the students who took it in eighth grade, how those students did in 11th grade. So we can see, did they improve? If I'm looking at this right, it looks like if we're comparing the same students, there was an improvement in those same students. Instead of saying, okay, the, the class that took them this year did this percentage, how did they do?
Did the 11th graders take them in eighth grade?
Yes.
Okay, because it must have been just the first year or something, first or second year. Because they started after the other.
The spring of your eighth grade year, what year was it?
Um, 2011.
So in 2011, they got 18 percent. And so it is an increase of the percentage of our 11th graders.
So they're doing better, those actual students, as much as they've stayed the same, are doing better.
Well, that's the question, as much as they stayed the same. You see, really what we need to strive for is, is an actual comparison of individual student and see how many students improved and how many didn't. That's, that's the individual correlation of the scores that we don't have when you look at these percentages. So that's what is certainly a, a formative question that the administration will welcome in terms of trying to figure it out and report on that. I mean, we wouldn't report an individual student. I mean, we wouldn't report on individual students, but we could report, well, twenty of them did better and twenty of them did worse and ten of them did about the same.
So, you know if you're really improving individual students...
That's the indicator we should be going by.
Through years and that your extra credits of science and things are actually helping individual students.
Is that something we can ask, we can get a little more information on?
I just don't know how helpful the information will be.
Agreed.
Because we're talking about a difference of three, four students, plus we, it may not include all of the students who are here in eighth grade, so...
Yeah, you have to only, you can only, you limit the scope of your selection because you can only take the students who've been here before tests.
Or here.
And then you have to know something about the profile of those students as well as what kind of courses they took. It takes some in-depth analysis and, as Dorin says, the numbers are pretty small, so what conclusions can we really draw from it?
Well, well, I just...
I still think it's important to know how individual students do in the aggregate.
And that's something I'm sure Dorin looks at for herself, you know, to assess how the school's doing. In a small school, it's tough, you know, to deal with that. But one of the things that I will point out is that we are significantly below state average and both in eighth grade and in eleventh grade. And I'm, you know, I'm still shocked at how low the state average is in eighth grade. Less than the third, twenty-six percent of all students are achieving proficiency and only sixteen percent of the eleventh grade, that's a significant difference. And so, I guess, you know, at some point, we're going to have to have a conversation about what do we need to do?
What's the plans for improving?
That's right. What do we need to do to improve those scores? Because I'm unhappy with twenty-six percent at the state average and yet we're below that, so we need to be, we need to be beefing up in this area for sure.
And we've got full lists of weaknesses in both grades and no strengths.
Right.
Is there a correlation to the grade point averages of like the average kid scores in these science classes and what we consider to be acceptable passing grade in these classes was considered accepting and passable in these tests? Like, are the same number of kids that are getting a non-acceptable score, the same amount of kids that are not getting an acceptable score? Like, who knows the kids that are getting Ds? Or are we saying that all these kids have eighties and nineties, but at the state level they're getting sixteen percent proficiency?
Great question. Well, both Jeanina and Evan took this test. This is their class. And I don't know if you want to share any insights on the attitude of the students when they took the test. Because that, because almost all of them had earth science or chemistry when they took it. You have a very strong class and, like you just said yourself, more enrolled in APs and dual enrollment courses certainly than ever. So, but I did have some interesting conversations with students, with students, members of your class about their perspective on testing.
Yeah, I can speak to that attitude. I think it's safe to say that not a lot of people took it seriously at all. And I'm not sure that, like, sixteen percent of us passed, is that what?
Twenty-three percent. So, almost a quarter at the current standards.
I think much more than twenty-three percent could have passed had the student, had he or she tried, but not a lot of significant things.
That's another big issue, is that there's really no incentive for Jeanina or I to try harder except for whether or not we care about our school. Because, I mean, how much effort we put in the test is entirely voluntary. I mean, if I just decide to draw a happy face in the prompt and just close the book and put my head down, nobody's going to stop me. The best incentives we have are if you improve your score, you can get a ticket towards winning a car when you're a senior.
It's proven.
And if a certain level of the class passes this amount, maybe we'll go on a trip somewhere. And it's just, a lot of kids, they just go in and they're overwhelmed with school or home labor, whatever else they want to do, and they see this booklet that's about this thick and they're told they're going to have to take this for the next two days and that if they're gone from school, they're going to have to miss classes to make it up. And it's really, really inconvenient and tedious and time consuming. And the number of kids that just don't take it seriously is huge.
That's why I think the aspect...
I don't really know if those are incorporated into their numbers or not. And maybe this new electronic test will change that. And maybe it'll just add to the inconvenience and feeling of it being overwhelming.
Understood, and, you know, like I said, I've been on the school board for a long time, fifteen years. I've been hearing, Mike, you too, have been hearing this same feedback on every time we've had lower test scores. The thing that, and I'm sure that that's there, what I'm concerned about is the fact that we're no, we should be no different than any other school in the state of Vermont where other kids in other schools are feeling the same way and yet we still remain well below the state average. So, factoring in what you're saying is important, but I would assume that every school would have to factor that in as well. So, if it is a bigger deal here, then we should be figuring that out. We should be, if it really is that, you know, many more than twenty-three percent of our kids in eleventh grade could be doing a better job, then we have to figure out why they're not compared to the thirty-two percent or thirty-six percent or whatever at the state level.
And I think another factor is that each class has its own culture, like, for example, last senior class, there's a reason why it was such a high dropout rate. I mean, it's just like a, in a certain class, there's a certain culture that comes with it. So, like, a certain class might not care for these tests, but another class might be encouraged to do well on them. I mean, it's just...
We understand that, but as a school board...
Yeah.
There are responsibilities.
Is there reasons why performance on these tests is not tied into any form of grade performance?
That's what I was going to ask. Is there any way to correlate grade performance with, this is a standard state test, is there any way the board to know the grade levels of these kids in these grades? Are there certain percentages over eighties or a certain percentage of sixties?
May I speak to that? Okay, so, this has been proposed before. There are schools that have said that you don't graduate unless you get a passing score on the decap test, math, language arts, even science. Massachusetts did this statewide. They had...
Still does.
Tremendous, tremendous problems initially. Nobody thinks they've reached perfection yet, but they just had a lot of dropouts and a lot of people going to summer school and a lot of extra money that they put into the additional instruction to try to get kids focused on this. Now, certainly that did motivate the kids in terms of if they wanted to graduate. You know, we certainly have a commendable completion rate for high school that other states don't enjoy. So, you know, we have to be careful about what we're doing in terms of seeing our kids through to high school graduation. I think the question here is that Evan raises, is the discrepancy, possible discrepancy between what we do for classroom assessment and determining the achievement, understanding and learning of our students in math or language arts, whatever, and compared to what this standards-based assessment is across the, across the nation, used across the nation. No doubt that'll reform instruction and certainly, as you see with the computer, use a computer, it may be a little more accessible, a little bit more engaging for some students. I struggle with the issue of whether to recommend that it be part of graduation requirement or part of a course credit. Because when, that's when you get to high-stakes testing. And earlier in my career, I had a teacher of science from England come and visit me and stayed for a couple of weeks, observed my classes, physics and math, and he was pretty amazed by our instructional situation here. First of all, I was astounded that students were so eager to ask questions and to answer them incorrectly. It was a bit of a joke, but the fact is, people had the courage to speak up in our classes where that is not the case. You've been to China, you know, other countries have a different approach in education where it's more of a gateway and an achievement, get over the bar to get to the university. So, what I'm suggesting is it's a little more complicated answer and I don't think the board should ignore it, but I don't think you should jump to any conclusion about it until there's research and we actually see what the effect is of that kind of testing. Because as this student, as this teacher from England pointed out to me, every year, when it comes to the big test in England, twelve kids commit suicide.
We've had this conversation at board level before. We've tried to address the issue. We've come up with other types of incentives in the school. Dorin has them already in place. You've mentioned a few of them, Evan. Maybe we need to come up with others. I mean, so, I don't want to beleaguer this too much because honestly, I think we're going to be talking about the science tests again.
So, what are we talking about?
What to do to improve science performance?
No, but I think, I think Evan and I are sort of on the same wavelength. We're wondering about the grade, the achievement in grades in the different, the grade level. Leave the test aside. Maybe it's from indifference, maybe it's from lack of loyalty to the school, who knows? Put that over there. Don't talk about making that the requirement for graduation. Take a look at what's happening in the individual grades in the individual classes and give that to the board.
Well, I would assume that that's...
And it's hard to do.
I would assume that that's ongoing all the time in the school, assessing how the kids are doing.
No, but the board doesn't know it. The board sees this. And I think this is an artificial evaluation.
So, I thought we just agreed with Dorin, look at that. Is that not true?
It's the correlation between the grades and the performance on the kneecaps. It's a legitimate, it's certainly a question that should be of interest to the general public and the board, so...
Yeah, I thought we'd already said...
Yeah, we're going to do that. Yeah, I have your individual growth, eighth to eleventh grade, and also a correlation with your actual marks in the course, right, Evan? That was your point, right?
But, I mean, it all has to be measured, right? And taken in the context in which it is because, you know, we have to be able to hold them accountable for this, the school.
So, the question was raised about why these scores were lower than state level and what needs to be done about this. And so, we just raised a few points and so, what did we accomplish with this discussion?
Well, first, we're going, Dorin's going to look at that, and I'm assuming, and see if there's a correlation between, you know, test scores in the, or classroom scores, whether they're tests or classroom grades, and these kneecap scores. And I think we're going to ask, you know, to talk about this again when the science teachers come because they were not available tonight.
Can I make a separate point to kind of connect this?
Please.
You know, you were a generation that kind of grew up with the kneecaps, as it being new. And my guess is along the way, you encountered teachers that were not particularly happy with this eight, six to eight-day incursion into their school day to administer a test that they couldn't help you with. And probably you encountered teachers that didn't have good attitudes about said test and maybe incurred attitudes negative towards the test and also realized that it was inconsequential to you as a student. And so, you go forward and by the time you get to eleventh grade, who cares? You know it's just, you know it's basically useless data for you, so why invest in it? And we've got, besides the science kneecap, we're throwing that out the window, we've got a new name, a new look to the test. And we should really work hard to have the teachers have a positive attitude towards the students about testing, a good thing, important. Because I do think coming up, and I say this through our elementary school because I work with elementary school teachers that have bad attitudes about the test and it rolls over to the student. You know, to keep that kind of positive energy towards, this is important, this is about you, this is not just about, this is not your school board needing this information or your principal, this is for you to help us teach you better. And if we can, if we could work, because we have that kind of do-over going on right now, that might help you a lot and by the time you get to eighth grade, not feeling so disenfranchised with the process.
Well, send.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
This test will continue for the next two years.
Right.
So, in the same paper pencil format.
The kneecap.
Yep, in science.
In science.
Yep.
Okay, so, we'll bring this back up at a later date. Thank you. Anything else? There's a lot in your report. And the improvement plan is something that we still need to have a conversation about. Do you have anything you wanted to focus on?
That's all. I mean, I want to respect that the work that the board needs to do tonight, so I think I've taken up some of the time already.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
How's the right-of-way thing here connected?
How's the what?
The right-of-way.
Oh.
What we're finding is while there is some use of the right-of-way when students are in session, it's generally a truck and a car and they've been driving slowly and it has not presented a problem. And we will continue to keep our eye on it as the weather gets worse. Because that's because of the angle and perhaps in, you know, poor road conditions, it might be, might still pose a challenge, but right now it's okay. There is not, I mean, it's really a couple of cars going in in the morning and they leave late in the day. It's not like the, it's being used by many people as parking lot.
Dix, any other questions for Dorin about anything? We're going to have to come back on these reports if anybody has them, unless you have something tonight. Hold on to them. Okay. Steven?
Right. I have no written report and I'm going to have mercy on the board and not report on anything else. For that matter, I call your attention to a paper I'll pass around that is from the WCSU board meeting, retreat planning meeting. There was a proposal from Marlboro School, the Marlboro School District that'll be taken up at a, at a subsequent meeting, perhaps on the 22nd. I invite you all to attend the meeting on the 22nd, WCSU Executive Committee and warrant the full board meeting if participation warrants that being established at the quorum. But it is to set the direction to me regarding the superintendent's budget, the agency fund and the grants budget. And those are the assessments once voted in December by the full WCSU board that will come back to be part of your budgets in the various school districts, including Leland Grays. This is a proposal to share special ed costs among all the member school districts of the WCSU. And it's, it's an effort to try to get the budgets to quit going up and down like this depending on special ed costs and be more even.
But this is proposed for case six.
Yeah, it's a example, that's right. Well, it does. It is, you are influential in communities and you want to know what's happening, that's it. Yeah, I guess you're right, I'm wasting my time.
Well, not really, because I think it does have implications. It has implications across the board, but I, and I think it's important that we all hear it, but I think they're proposing it for case six.
I am obliged to give it full...
We get a vote.
...the pension of the board, because you got a vote on it. You know, you could abstain as a board.
It's pretty unusual for us to have a vote.
You could abstain as a board, but if you have a position, you should make a known. Then I have your, and I have other things tonight that we'll get on to that frame the discussion about finances for the future and future planning for budget. You have from me previously, which was given, emailed out at that WCSU board meeting, the fund balances for boards for the school districts at the end of FY fourteen projected and those turned out to be negative and positive, Leland Grays on the negative side, but they average out through the whole SU to be about fifty-six thousand dollars negative, which is kind of surprising the way things even out over the whole deal. I refer you back to that document as well as it recaps the tax rates, the total tax rate for every school, district, town, rather, and municipal tax rate combined. And it's very interesting to see how this compares across the county. And the other one that is on there is something about student enrollment and student-teacher ratio, which is something I'll ask you about later on in the plan. I'm looking for the reference of this paper. And I think we'll proceed right to Bud's report on your finances if you're ready. I'm trying to move things along because I do think we'll need to have quite a bit of time on the issues of, of the budget planning that you should anticipate your administration undertakes between now and the next, next board meeting. Any questions for me? This report here on finances, I apologize for Bud, he has a hundred and something temperature today at R and three last night. He came into the office to try to work, I sent him home. Trying to make sure we don't spread those kinds of things, so I apologize on his behalf. If you look on this summary statement, this is as of September 30th, so, for example, the PLOs that you vote on tonight and so forth, they're not included in this. Those will be in the October statement. You're in pretty good shape. Revenues don't look like they're where they should be, but that's typical at this time of year. Revenues don't look like they're where they should be, but that's typical at this time of year. And then when you get to expenditures as you go down the line there, I don't think there are any really glaring issues standing out that warrant any particular attention from me. But I do call your attention to the bottom of the second page just to understand what those numbers are. This pertains to our considerations of planning for the FY16 budget. The fund balance that was audited, that means it's been approved by the auditors and you've accepted the auditor's report for FY13, was a negative 111,327. That is not particularly new to anybody here. In fact, your present budget that we're in now is trying to pay back 75,000 on that, that imbalance. So if everything worked out, in other words, for this fiscal year 15 that we're in in terms of enrollment, our projected revenues and our expenses, we should expect that 111,000 to be reduced by 75,000. The anticipated, it's projected, it's preliminary, it hasn't been audited, but it's always pretty close, is 30,000 for FY14. That ended June 30th of 2014. So in summary, you're starting out this year when you think about the FY16 plan, 146,000 in the negative, in the red. And then you have perhaps if everything works out right, that reduced by 75,000. So, you know, we're starting out maybe at something like 50,000 or 60,000 in the red if everything works out well as we open the budget July 1 of 2015, which is what you're planning for this fall. Now Bud is still intending and trying to get us to have a projection of another column that indicates what's, what's encumbered, so we will know that we're, we're pretty close or not to our bottom line by the end of the year. But that's not yet available.
So what's this?
That's what I was just explaining. Oh, the first, above the line, okay. Above the, above those two figures I mentioned is, this is really your, your balance sheet in terms of revenue versus expenditures as it goes through the year. It's pretty meaningless, but it is what's supposed to appear on a balance sheet. So that 36,000 you're worried about there, right?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering what 79,000 is, but I, I don't-
Well, you have to compare. I don't know that 79 makes too much sense.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't-
If you go back to your revenues, ordinarily what would happen on that would, I would, that isn't going to work out, so I can't say. I'll have to figure out why that is. With my other schools that I've reported on, what happens is on the front sheet, just to let you know, you see the middle, middle, second column there on the revenues? Okay, that's revenues that we've actually received. That's a 1,980,000. Now ordinarily, what you would do is take that 1,900, 1,980,000 and you would, you would subtract from that what you've spent. And what you've spent is 1,135,000 on the second page. If you take 1,980,000 and you can see then that we're over, right? That's why we're in a negative.
Okay.
It's close.
It's just a different-
It's not exactly right. It's a different kind of report.
This new program, this new software, it's just different in a-
Yeah. You, you're used to a single page and I wasn't able to get that produced for us today, but it should be all making the same sense. And if you have questions, don't hesitate to ask them of Bud in the between meetings if you have to. But that, that line is trying to show what your cash versus, you know, expenditures is, your income versus expenses.
We get revenue in-
And it changes throughout the year.
We get revenue in specific times.
It's a very unstable number of what, it's not, it's not likely to make, you know, it's just a snapshot at June, at September 30th.
Steven, clarify a question?
Yes.
So on the first page, the first line there, it says tuition Athens. I think, does, does that actually include all of the tuition towns, that line? So be Athens, Grafton, Dover, Warrensboro? Because that number would not, that looks like the total. Okay.
Good point, and we should have that corrected.
Yeah, thank you. I, I do appreciate any comments about these reports because they need to get, they need to get better, yeah. And they'll only get better with your suggestions about what is confusing or not appropriate.
I just suggest that you really do look these over. I know that this was just handed to you tonight, so look it over and ask questions because these are new and we really need to be paying attention to this, the financials.
Another quick question is, I guess I should do the numbers. Do we feel like it has 16% of the FY15 passed and so we're kind of on target?
Well, that's revenues.
Right, so we should have spent, say, 16% of our budget at this point?
Well, yeah, see you can see, you can see on the next page that you spent 16% of your budget and you only have received 15% of your, you know, your revenue.
But tomorrow-
Okay.
That's why you're in the red. That's why this little line here has a currency line.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
That's negative.
But I mean, are we about 16% into our school year? That's the question.
We're way over that.
We're way over that, uh-huh.
Okay.
We're really at the first quarter already on assessment.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, hold on to that, bring it to your next meeting. Hopefully there'll be another one at the next meeting, we can compare them.
That's right.
We're doing, we're in the, still in the audit? We're still in the audit meeting?
We're still in the audit, auditing the audits, auditing. Auditors are going to return next week, I believe. And we expect to get the reports, hopefully get them out. Get ours in time here for Leland Gray for, you know, December to inform our budget. That's the goal of having this done at this time. So we'll see if they get turned around in time for that. I'd rather deal with real numbers than, you know, on audit ones, so.
Okay. Career Center?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll try to be very brief because it's, it's interesting, but it's not mind-blowing. Two, two specific courses presented to us at the last meeting. The first was a very interesting one, a biomedical science course. It's a new one and it's the first in a series of four programs in that subject area. The kids are studying, made a good presentation. They're studying principles of biomedicine. They're learning in the context of an unattended death of a woman. Genetic factors, forensic and medicine factors. The, as students, interestingly enough, going into this course don't have to have a prerequisite of science and it's very popular. It was, it was a well-received course. Then they study human body systems through dissections and data collection applying to their own bodies. Third part is medical intervention, which is based within a family where they do preventive work, diagnoses and treatment. And the last part of this biomedical course is biomedical interventions where they're studying current health issues, for example Ebola. The students entering that course who want to pursue this going on to college, it was very interesting, they were very committed to it. The second course that was presented was the firefighter and EMS program. The firefighter program leads to a license. It's a 168-hour course for a full year. Covers first aid, CPR, highway safety and hazmat. The emergency medical responder course, which is part of that program, they get a national certification, they can become a paramedic. They study anatomy, physiology, patient assessments, medical trauma, and interestingly enough, patient assessment of the elderly. They said that the sending school enrollment was up among their contingent schools. The most popular courses that are pretty well oversubscribed are the EMR, biomedical, automotive, early childhood, business, circus acts, geometry and construction, law enforcement, and introduction to horticulture. Ones that are low in enrollment and they're looking at very carefully are filmmaking, STEM, diversified farming and landscape. And the director brought us up to date on something called the Technical Assistance Visit Team Orientation. It's a school improvement program that's going to be conducted beginning of December. It's, a consultant is coming in, they're hoping to gain experience in raising the expectations of student performance. It's on our plate too. Teaching methods and how school relates to students and how teachers relate to each other. Interestingly enough, they're offering a math collaborative to the sending schools. They're going to provide teacher training if it's needed. Didn't sound like we needed it, but. And an issue surfaced at the very end that Steven and I were kind of interested in, the career, the cost per pupil allocation by the state, if a child goes, the student, excuse me, goes to the career center, the sending school doesn't receive that allocation, which is creating tension and friction. I don't know the answer to it, but that's it. It's an interesting subject.
Nothing's changed in that area, it's just-
No, nothing's changed. It just came up as, as, yes, as a, it depends.
It's concerned for us for long term.
But it's, it's a very, it's a very lively and interesting subject, very productive.
Well, I'd just add that discussion a little farther on that point. The only, well, one possible solution would be for a larger catchment. In other words, the whole Wyndham County or the supervisory units that are connected to the career center actually support the career center on a per-student basis, regardless of whether they go to the career center or not. So it's much reduced amount of money, but it's a, it's like being a member of a club and then you send as many kids as want to go and it doesn't cost you anymore if five kids go or as 10 kids go, which is unfortunately what, what is happening at this point. So that's, that's a challenge.
So you base it on the size of your school, basically?
Yeah, you, you, or you could, another way to put it is when we send a student there, it costs $13,000 or so. And if you did it on a per-student just assessment fee, based on AVM, it might be something in the neighborhood of $500 per student, but it count all of your students. I mean, in other words, the amount of expense should be about average the same, but depending on which schools are spending more fewer kids, doesn't, doesn't affect their bottom line in that school.
Which it is now, yeah.
Which is what's happening right now.
Sure is. It's been for a long time.
But that takes people working together, I tell you folks. And that's a hard, that's a hard sell.
Well, not that we have a lot of choice. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
For whatever reason, the percentage of students who are in the career center this year is much smaller than the previous two or three years.
In the current year we're in?
Current year, yep. For our juniors and seniors, so. That's been another barrier for student performance on NECA exams because they take most of their sciences there in their junior year. So they don't have, it's a different standard.
Okay, you ready to move on to the vision?
I think you have a hard copy, everybody have a hard copy of the two drafts that are results of this previous meeting. You'll see a short and a long form.
Anybody need a copy?
Who else need a book? I got them on both sides.
Anyone else?
Both sides, both sides. Okay, so, oh, okay. You may wonder what-
I couldn't see that either.
So it wasn't clear, it wasn't clear from the email, but, you know, what I, what I have here, I took the notes that we had from the previous, previous draft three that you've seen for the long form down below. Starts in the middle, halfway down the page. Turn it over and you'll see the other part. That is pretty much the same as before. It doesn't mention specifics under number seven. We had some specifics about technology, about rust, rusted, pairing the rust on the poles in some hallways and the kitchen, kitchen service, kitchen service facilities. So, so that's left more in the, you know, in the generic. Of course, when we, this is a vision of 2020, so it is a matter of balance between specificity and, and general vision. And so that also led to the shorter form, which I neither advocate for or against. I just, it shows you how in different words, you know, a, a vision can be more generally, more general and how it can be more definitive.
So I don't know, Twilight, you wanted to speak to your feedback that you shared with Steven about this?
Sure. After the meeting last, two weeks ago, I was kind of frustrated because it seemed like every time we started making progress, the threat of the budget kind of took us back a few steps. And for every three steps, two steps back. So what I did was I looked back at our old goals that we had and they were pretty broad items that we had on, on the goal list. And I went through our two sheets that we had and just kind of came up with the idea of the first few that we had, that they're, they're broad. But so many of the things that we had on our list can fall in, under those categories. So I thought that that might be a place to, to start without the necessarily for the budget being right over our heads because it seemed like, to me, if we're going to think ahead to 2020, while we do have to, you know, keep budgets in mind, that should not be the thing that deters us from making some of these changes.
So Twilight sent her a short form and that's how you, how I came up with this top one here. It's more or less similar to some of your, most of your ideas Twilight. I just, there may be a few word changes there. So remember, this is the product of your retreat, your planning retreat and I, on the, on the agenda, you'll see that this is the old business to try to resolve and decide as a board what you want to use as your vision statement and there, that little form provide the directions to your administration, not only this year, next year, but in the future, planning towards 2020.
Okay, so, feedback. Want a vision?
I think the short form does a pretty good job of summing it up. The second, the, you know, I read these and went, well, they're the same. You just took some detail out and broadened up each one. These are things that can accomplish that, but maybe not. In three years, we may find that the specifics in the longer version limit us rather than help us. So I thought, I thought they were essentially the same and I would be, I thought the short version was better. I think a shorter is usually better in these things. And broad is also better.
Can I ask maybe both the administration and the board? What do you, how do you want to use the vision statement? What is your, what is your view of the, the use of the vision statement? Because, you know, there, there are different interpretations of it. Typically, a vision statement is sort of following, you prompted me to ask this question. A, a vision statement often is quite broad and short. That's typical. It's not usually in the details. The details come, you know, through your goals, that you base them, you base goals on vision statements typically. And then you have action steps underneath those goals, which is where all the, the goals and the action steps are where the details come out typically. But, but I don't know what the board or the administration is looking for in this vision statement specifically. What is your, because I think we need to tell not only the administration how, how we plan to use this vision statement, but we need to share with our school community and our broader community not only the vision statement that we choose, one or the other or something else, but also how we're going to use it. So. Anybody have any thoughts?
I know this speaks to what you were saying, but I looked at this as kind of like a policy in a way, the format of a policy. The first part of it is the actual policy and the second part is our steps that we go to reaching, to maintaining the policy or reaching the policy type, you know, vision statement and which will change. There'll be, you know, as we go along. I, I like the short form. I think that, I've never seen a vision statement that looks like the long form.
It's detailed, yeah.
Yeah. I think that holds us to maybe too much or something. I think that holds us to maybe too much or something. It doesn't give us, or give the administration the flexibility they might need to do what they want to do within constraints of a budget and things.
Okay, Bruce, do you have it?
I thought the shorter version gives us flexibility from now till 2020, and we're going into a time where we don't know what's gonna happen. So being specific is far more dangerous. We just don't know in some cases what we're gonna have to do. So the first one gives us some flexibility. And yet, if somebody from the public or somebody from the state wants to know what we vision, I think that's...
Well, you're asking about use for this. I think, you know, we spend a lot of time and energy, I think this is, we've distilled down sort of an ideal situation for the school. Ideally, this is what we want. This is what we want to spend six years sort of steering towards, and there are a lot of pieces of it, but it gives some sort of guidance for, you know, us as we move forward through, you know, the next few years and the administration. It's like, okay, if you're considering something, does it help this? Is it in, you know, does it agree with the vision statement? Or does it, you know, take something that we've said in the vision statement is important and get rid of it? You know, it just, it serves as sort of a guide star for the board and the administration for the next six years to work towards this goal. And we'll probably have conversations, you know, in a year or two, like, does this get us closer to the vision, or how does this go to our vision? Or do we need to modify our vision? But, you know, I think it just gives us a target rather than, so that we're all sort of, you know, working in the same direction, or at least we've tried to get to the point where we're all working in the same direction, rather than at cross purposes.
Okay. Any thoughts?
I think that was well said.
I have another thought.
Go ahead, sorry.
And Dorin has always been very good about this, is when, you know, our last vision statement that we had or our goals, we did that all-day retreat, and in her reports, she's always been very good about, and the board wants this, so this is how I'm going about this, and referring back to this statement and how it will achieve the things that we want to, so if we carry this and refer back to it regularly and see if we're on track or whatever.
So can I go to the administration then, since you've opened that up? And I mean, I've got, I keep this, this is kind of dog ear, but this is important to me, our previous goals for student, school board goals for student learning, and you all have a copy of it. And you're right, you're absolutely right, Patty. Dorin has been referring back to this and has been using this because these are specific goals that we had set in place, and as easy and hard decisions have needed to be made across the last few years, this was 2011, you know, Dorin, I know, went back and referred back to these. The administration, you, Dorin, you, Stephen even, how do you see using this vision statement? I mean, are you looking at making those goals? Because I don't think we were doing them as goals, but maybe we are. I mean, we can do whatever we want, obviously, but I'm, I'm very mindful of making sure that what the board's doing with a vision, that it's assisting the administration. And this, Peter.
Well, the short, the short form is a vision piece, an aspirational. It doesn't really empower the administration, particularly Dorin, facing the enormous challenges of reform and change for instruction in schools, specifically about what to do. So the second, longer one that we spent a day developing as a board in retreat really has more specifics that I would hope the board doesn't just walk away from, but if in fact you still endorse those, as you did previously, that you attempt to make the both, the best of both of these documents by, you know, maybe having the second, longer form be introduced by a phrase such as "to reach this vision, Leland and Gray will," and then you can have those specifics. I think that's kind of a win-win. So if somebody asks you what your, what your vision is, you can have that shorter form that is very attractive to people, and certainly, as you said, more, I'd say, general and aspirational and can carry on and may well carry on well past 2020. But the specifics that we need regarding construction of a budget from year to year aren't really articulated sufficiently within that statement. That's the disadvantage of just standing with the short form.
But, and I want to open it to Dorin too, but when I look at the three goals that we've had, they're pretty broad as well. It was the indicators of progress and the strategic action steps that we took from those broad goals that helped drive the decision-making in the future. So Dorin, do you have something?
In the short draft, being aspirational, I don't know how I would have measures or evidence for addressing each area because they're so broad and because they're aspirational and perhaps not measurable, other than surveys, so the affective rather than the quantitative of, say, dual enrollment participation. Whereas in the second area, number two, provide secondary excellence for integrated educational system pre-K-12. I don't know if I've ever reported to the board the efforts of Leland and Gray and our elementary schools to create greater pre-K-12 continuity, and I would love to report on it because it's a big aspiration for us that's quite concrete. And then, and there are other examples in the section that I think that we could, that are measurable, as well as helping us determine priorities. Now, these are going to be competing priorities. Estimated that we'll have 12 fewer students next year, and with the incoming seventh grade class, that is for next year, being considerably smaller than even our current seventh grade class, which is pretty small. So it will be, we'll still be facing the same fiscal challenges and having to make tough decisions about the number, variety of programs we can keep. However, and perhaps that we can focus more on the second part as the basis for making those decisions. And this, I mean, aspirational is great, but I would feel worse making the, you know, working with the board and Stephen and Bud, making reductions in places that we don't want to, you know, but based on the numbers, it's only so many things that you can support. So I don't know if that answers the question, but that's what I'm seeing in terms of pros and cons of the two versions.
I think they serve a separate purpose. I mean, it's a little bit confusing because our vision is here and this down here speaks to our strategic plan and measurable outcomes. They're, they're two different things. I love the fact that, that we were able to distill this down into a new vision. When I looked at coming, attempting to be on the board, the first thing I did was go to the website to see what the mission is. That's the place that I come from in corporate America. That's a very important thing to know, who we are. I found the whole process that we went through very valuable, and I agree with this mission, but I don't, I don't want us to lose these points down here and provide these tools to our administration because this is what we need.
So I'm wondering if we can, because I agree, I mean, I think that, you know, we've got a lot in here that we all bought into and said were priorities for us. If there's a way we can turn, I mean, I look at the goal for, the last, first goal was students, students engage in learning based on their readiness, not age. And our first, they're not numbered, but the first of the short version is provide an environment where all students are driven by their aspirations and engaged in learning without being limited by their circumstances. They're not the same, but they are similar. They're similar. And so I'm wondering if we can build something out of this document that'll give us more specifics. Is what I get some sense? Moving, moving to, finding some indicators to, of progress by using what we have down here in the second version. We've driven you right out of here, sorry Patty.
These guys play hard today. Thank you.
Weren't you suggesting, Stephen, that combining the two and saying, you know, here's our vision, and in order to realize this vision, we just take the longer version and say, here are some steps to realize that vision?
Yes, I would love to. I would love to have a formal... I mean, I think that probably does what we just talked about doing. It gives you the guidance. We've talked about some specific steps, and it's all guidance that we supported because it translates into the shorter mission statement that is broader and, you know, allows us some flexibility moving forward.
I don't hear much disagreement, just in view of everything.
There were nods down here, how about you?
I agree with everything that's been said so far, no issue. Just wanted to raise one slightly off topic, but I'll say it anyway. I feel that we may be on a bit of a collision course with a lot of select boards of our, of the town, union towns. And we addressed the fiscal bit, but I think that we're going to have to have a better plan to address it than just say that we will be fiscally responsive.
Bomber, it's a good transition to the new business item here. I have a number of statistical, hard questions about finance that I think will, you know, give the board an opportunity to discuss, the direction we need as administrators to come up with a budget that's gonna meet reasonable expectations.
I appreciate you bringing it up, Bomber, you're absolutely right.
I think he's referring to a cap, just the public note, he's referring, he may be referring to this proposal that some boards, some select boards have voted, Vernon and Newfane specifically, to cap, to support or endorse a hard cap on education expenses.
Well, it was to encourage the legislators to...
Yeah.
What, I, I, cap what?
Okay, you better, you better share that.
This is an article that was in the paper a couple of days ago, and it's one of mine. I mean, this is not new stuff.
And there's been a lot of fallout from it and feedback from it. The SBA has put something out, I think the Vermont League of Cities and Towns have met. This was not endorsed by any organization that I am aware of at all beyond whoever put this out. This, it came from the Burlington or something, South Burlington's town planner or something. I forget who it was.
It's just something that I think we're going to be hearing more and more, even.
So is it appropriate to make a motion to do something with this vision?
I, that's what I would love. I think we should finish that conversation before we get into...
It's impressive, but it's different.
I hope the board will...
For the next, yeah, the conversation.
Yeah, Patty, I hope the board will endorse, you know, formally endorse and decide, yes, this is the vision, and then it follows to realize this vision, Leland and Gray will, and have the rest of it. Then you've got one piece of a document, it's including every, you haven't lost anything that you previously discussed, and I think it will serve better than either document by itself.
So moved.
So agree.
Okay, so, it's been moved in second to adopt the short version, that version as the Leland and Gray board's mission, I mean, vision, and then the longer version...
The longer version as the to-do list.
As the to-do list for, or as the mission, or whatever.
Implementation.
I mean, at this point, I'm like, Ray Prue would teach us the vision, which was the stars, what we're aspiring towards, and the mission was the work.
Okay.
So that, I've easily translated to... I mean, it's not our official mission though, because we have a mission also here. So I would be very conscious that you, conscious of using the word mission. So another word...
Implementation or...
No, to realize this vision.
Realize this vision.
Because you're referring to the vision above, right?
Patty's trying to make a motion, and everybody's helping her, and I want to make sure we get it clear. So Patty, do it again.
Appreciate all the help I can get.
Patty, start again, because I want to make sure Peter's getting it.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, is that the correct word? The short draft as our vision, and the long draft as our goals.
Steps.
To...
Well, really, I'd like to see it just as one document. It starts out with vision, and it says to realize this vision, and then the rest of it. Don't worry about whether it's steps or action plans or whatever.
Yes.
That's what you, when you said so moved, that's what you were saying.
Okay, yes, that's what I was saying, to adopt this, this document as our vision, but with that, that change of...
With that, yeah, with that transition statement.
Yes.
Can you also, in the motion for us to have the final version approved for something to at least...
Oh, yes, with the final version available for us to prove at the next meeting.
Will do.
Or prior to the next meeting.
Keep playing. Good luck on the files.
Did you get that, Peter?
Well, I've got, move to adopt the short draft as our vision, adding to realize this vision, Leland and Gray will.
Actually, to, I'm making a motion to have the whole document as our vision, adding the transitional statement, whatever you said.
Between the short form and the long version, Peter, they're going to put, put a sentence, to realize this vision.
Right, yes.
And that will link the two versions together.
Don't say vision there, the whole thing is vision, is to realize this.
No, no, this, this is the vision, right?
No, that's the vision.
That's the vision piece of it.
The vision is the top.
It's the top, and the other is...
The rest of it, to realize the vision will be the, the longer part.
It is semantics.
It is semantics, but what, but what she also added in her motion was that Stephen would bring, or the administration would bring a final version for us at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Or before the next meeting, so it's...
I can edit to you by email.
Okay. Was there a second to that motion?
Aye, and we will post it.
Joe seconded it. Does everybody understand the motion? You ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion on the vision, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, we're on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Because that was a lot of work to put into that. Okay, now, where are we?
I do think that the sec, the longer version needs to be, have some editing done to it just to make it easy to understand.
If you have suggestions, if you have suggestions on editing, would you please send them to both Stephen and I?
We'll have to vote on it again, I guess.
I will do that.
And that's true of anybody else before, because we'll look at the final version at our next meeting. So if you've got editing sentences, Stephen and I.
Lots of numbers.
Okay? All right.
Okay, so we got, we got numbers.
So we've got new business.
Well, you're new business, right?
Yep, we're on new business. Provide guidance and direction to inform the administration's preparation of a proposed budget for FY16 for a first reading at the November 11th meeting. This is what we're here for tonight, folks. So it's two pieces of paper we're being passed?
Yep, you got two pieces of paper. I will have a third one if you want, but...
We don't have enough.
We need one more.
We need a few more down here.
We need one.
It's the, it's the, we're written.
One of these.
All right, so what I have here, it depends on how you want to start out, but first of all, it's important to know where we stand as Leland and Gray compared to other schools in the state. So Bud has done the research on that. This is from the AOE website, and that's, I'm talking about the big spreadsheet with the numbers on it. One of these that I had something written on it, Chris. And you can see, and you can compare in different ways. These are all seven through 12. There's some five through 12, and six through 12, nine through 12, but you can see that they're all union high schools, and they are, I think, all the union high schools. Over on the right, it tells you what, what category or size they're in. We're in the small size, and we could compare with other, other similarly sized schools, but at any rate, we would end up being higher if you restricted it to smaller sized schools in terms of our per pupil, equalized per pupil cost. And as Dorin just mentioned, projecting that we have 12 fewer... And as Duren just mentioned, projecting that we have 12 fewer students next year would compound, likely to compound that problem, that relative comparison. So, the, that leads me to the questions that I had here on my little piece of paper that if you're sitting in my, the, if you're sitting in my seat, my position responsibility with the rent administratively, we, we, we do not and cannot expect board members to sit around and decide on what's the best way to get instruction to our kids. That's really our responsibility as your administration, and, but we do need to have some specifics so that when I, we come with a budget on November 11th, or try to get one to you ahead of time, that, that we have some specific parameters with which, you know, to meet, to match. And this is where you're really in the tough position of having to represent the public and determine what the political decision is about how much funding we can provide upon what basis for the school. That's why I had this question, this little memo with the questions. Does anybody have any questions about the spreadsheet, first of all? It's not, it's, you know, you can dig and chew on it all you want, but it's.
We've been climbing on that list, just so everyone knows, you know, a more, a higher spending for equalized people.
Yes. What's the difference between budgets per equalized pupil and education spending per equalized pupil?
I see the equalized, the budget 2014, and the add spending per equalized pupil. I think that's your, your local, right? I'm sorry, I have to, I have to look that one up, I can't say.
Who wants a projected budget and wants the actual expense?
No, no, it, it would have to do with the differences between what the revenues are, the, the, what do you call it, revenues that we receive from the state for other things, they pull out the, pull out capital and transportation and so forth. Twenty-one seems high to me, fifteen seems still pretty high, you know, our tuition is fourteen-four, so that's another thing that's a problem for your member towns that
This is spending, not tuition, though.
Yeah, I understand, what I'm saying, if our spending is fifteen-three, and we only have a tuition of fourteen-four, people wonder, why the heck, why don't I just become a place like Wordsboro and send kids?
Because we're at our maximum allowable, we, we charge.
We charge our maximum allowable, and the state doesn't permit us to charge more. I think you'll, I, I guess I'll have to get back to him that, Bommen, I really can't. I'm sorry, I'm missing, I don't think Bud would do any better, I think it's just the fact that I don't have Frank's experience on that.
Equalized pupils at the high school level, you know, we get additional revenue, it's a, for every student, it's 1.13 we receive, we used to receive 1.25.
That predates the both of this, it's really spending versus budget.
But I'm just explaining the equalize.
I can assure you that we have not underspent our budgets.
Or other things, the equalized pupils as well.
That's the bad news for you there. Other questions? Thank you.
I mean, I'm not even sure what town, district's entire equalized pupils with the yes or no, they have the data, I guess, is what that means? Yes, they have?
Everybody, yes.
Yeah, so I'm not even sure, I, I'm not sure what all these columns are, we probably should hold on to these and ask Bud to help us when he's well.
Well, yeah, I, I do think the ranking is relevant there in that third column from the right, that's really what you're alluding to.
Well, right. And it, and it is following what we were saying, you know, it's, we're.
That's the state rank, not just the rank of this small group.
We've been crawling up into the top third, and we're now below, you know, we're, we're ranked 27th out of whatever.
Okay. What that does is give you perspective, and I have a couple other perspectives to add, but I, I don't think I want to go to those immediately, I want to first of all try to get, draw your attention to the focus on the questions. I have six questions listed, you can take all of them, any of them or none of them, but if you take none of them, your administration's sort of at sea as to determine how the heck to come up with a budget. So I hope you'll engage in some direction here, this is an effort to try to, to get those specifics to us, and, and challenge us to come up with a budget that meets those parameters. So the first one, you can see, you've got choices, I mean, you can tell us that we want no increase or decrease in the expenditures, now I'm focusing on expenditures here, right? That's what you vote on as a budget, your expenditures, or, or you want to limit it to an increase of some specific percent, or decrease by a specific percent. Now let me illustrate what no increase or decrease would mean. You already saw in the previous projected fund balance report that probably we're starting out fifty or sixty thousand dollars, you know, in the, in the negative. You, you, the last question says six, number six, how much of the remaining negative fund balance do you want to make up in your FY16 budget? You know, we put seventy-five thousand into this present budget, the one we're in right now, FY15, and the question is, how much do you want to put in to get closer to zero?
Well, yeah, I mean, we have more added to it now.
And I put that question at the bottom, because, you know, we, we did add, as you said, this last FY14, it looks like we've added about thirty thousand to that, right? So if, if we had an even level budget in terms of expenses, and I remind you, we're in a negotiations here with our professional bargaining unit, the teachers, as well as the support staff, those contracts expire June 30th, so administratively, we're not able to load in an automatic, you know, they agreed to specified compensation increases. So we, we have to probably go to executive session and, and determine what you think might be appropriate, if anything, but that is something that has to be in the budget consideration, that is, what, what compensation, if anything, we're going to provide for our employees.
It's possible, but it's unlikely, since the negotiations haven't started, it's unlikely that we will have that information about specifics on salaries by the time we have to pass our budget in December. I mean, I mean, vote on our budget, not pass our budget, vote, the school board vote on the draft budget to put, to propose to the, to the public, so.
Well, anyway, so.
But we can put a certain amount in, or none, or whatever, as a reserve fund.
So, just rough, rough estimates, your, your personnel costs are in excess of five million, around, probably about five million, if not more, and one percent of that is fifty thousand, so if you talk about overall compensation, that gives you an idea of what amount of money has to be saved within the budget, if you're going to have a zero budget, no increase or decrease, you know, if you just level fund, what we call level fund the budget. And then the other thing that we want to hang on to, and part of your vision, is the after-school activities for students, and we have to increase our match with that grant, probably around thirty-five thousand dollars this year, and then, and that'll be a slight increase the following year. I'm listing the specifics, there's going to be a healthcare increase, publicly they're talking about four and a half percent increase in terms of health premium, and there was one other thing I was thinking of, can anybody think of it, that we, we need to think about when we, we have an expense.
Well, I don't see anything on here about tax rates, but we need to be thinking about that as well.
Well, dual enrollment, you just came up with, you got to project on that, that's slight, I mean, not slight, but you said approximately nine thousand, nine thousand, then we have what?
This energy thing, you said there's costs associated with that? The En, Windham's counties, all energy.
No, there won't, that's a, that's a, that's a document that I signed regarding a grant, trying to get grants available to the schools, yeah, no, that's not going to be expensive, but you did make me think of something. This legislature passed a means to better fund the teachers' retirement system of medical benefits of the retirees by charging a thousand dollars for every new hire. And it's going to continue to be that case for that employee every year, it's not just a one-time deal, so when we hire people, you're going to have an additional employee, employment cost for those.
Every year.
Teachers every year.
And it increases as time goes on, too?
Yeah.
The amount.
Yeah, it's not a fixed, it's a little over a thousand dollars.
Thousand and seventy-nine the first year it was, but it's going to continue to go up every year with a certain.
So if we anticipate some, you know, new hires, we have to permit, we do allow, that that's going to be in our, in our costs. Obviously, if we hire someone less experienced and they aren't as expensive as a more experienced teacher, then probably we can make that up, at least initially, but anyway.
We should also keep in.
I'm just pointing to the costs that we have to, to figure that are really part of doing the business, and that's where we have to work back, I'm just explaining how we, as administrators, have to work backwards from whatever target you give us.
So we should also keep in mind that we're, we may be voting on a, proposing and voting on a budget for seven twelve, our taxpayers are paying for pre-K twelve, and there are additional expenses for pre-K.
Yeah, they have the same, and there's the supervisor union budget. Okay, so any, any questions on that first question?
It's also something disconcerting, I think I brought in the clippings, I, I think Patty has it, that Newfane and Vernon have already adopted resolutions on the two percent tax, education tax within the property, a cap?
Yeah.
And it's, Dover's considering it, it's.
Dover's, Dover's will not vote, from what I understand, Dover has said that they are going to probably pass a resolution with Wilmington saying no unfunded mandates, essentially. No, no, asking the legislature to please to not enact any legislation that would create an upward trend in the tax rate.
The, in the report that Patty has, the legislators are saying, don't, well, this is the one about Dover, but the one about Newfane and Vernon is, the legislators are saying, please don't do this, because it's, it's, it's a domino effect kind of a thing.
Well, it's not just the legislature that's saying it, I mean, there are unintended consequences of moving forward with that, and then the joint fiscal office, Mark Perrow from the joint fiscal office, if you haven't seen it, you should see it, I can email it to you, put out a report based on that resolution, that unfortunately, if I had been at Newfane, I would have really encouraged them to not do it, again, unintended consequences, he lays out specifically from the joint fiscal office exactly, you know, what the implications would be if we did do such a thing.
Well, I'm saying, it's, it's a mood out there, and it's something we need to listen to.
It is, it is, and it wasn't supported by the, the League of Cities and Towns, and Anne Manwaring made it very, very evident to, who's the representative over in Wilmington, to her select board in Wilmington, and Dover also heard about it, and that's why they came out and said they're not going to vote on that resolution, they're going to do something different, so. And that's what, you know, Bommen was speaking to. And it's a very good point, it's going around.
So, yeah.
So, so can I just go back to what Bommen said again? Because it refers to what we're trying to do here. It's no longer, I think, when I'm paraphrasing, but I think what you said was no longer okay just to say a fiscally responsible budget, we need to be a little more specific to the administration, and that's what I think Stephen's trying to get at.
That's what I, I really am trying to drive at, at least some direction that is going to be, but the worst-case scenario is, Duren and I go through everything we can, figure out what we can do, come up with a, with a budget, and we come to the board, and the public says, what are you thinking? We can't afford that.
Well, that's what happened last year.
You know, that's, that's why I want to get the, that's what we got last year.
Twice.
Yeah, you got to have something, so that's what the first question is trying to ask, trying to get specific about, I do want to, let's review all the questions, so you know what the whole picture is. The second question is, to what degree do you want the FY16 and future budgets to, expenditures to correlate with projected students, student enrollment? Now, you know the state is always hammering about this, if we have five percent fewer kids, then we should have five percent less money spent on education. It doesn't always work that way, you know enough about the classrooms and allocation of teachers and so forth, and know that if you have two fewer kids in the third grade, it doesn't mean you don't, you, you, you have, you know, ten percent less teacher in there. So the correlation doesn't really work, but in fact, Leland and Gray is a school that's larger, largest that we have in the SU, so I am aware that there may be, and there was at the WCSU board meeting, a direction to the superintendent, that is yours truly, that if there's declining enrollment of students across the SU, then the superintendent's budget ought to go down accordingly. And if that's what this board wants, we need to know that. And it says, you know, it, it gives an example, if you have student decline by two percent, should the budget decrease by two percent? Well, Duren just, you know, mentioned that it's possible that we have 12 fewer students next year in terms of projected numbers, I'm not prepared to commit to that till we know on our ADM reports coming up, the fortieth day reports from all our elementary schools, but at any rate.
Which unfortunately aren't accurate, because they are the three-year, you know, they, they.
Well, sorry, the ADMs are, but they have to report on actual enrollment, this forty days into the school year, we all have to report that.
This is complicated, but once we're starting in about phantom students and all that, that's what they're telling us not to, not to the budget.
Yeah, 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 we have 12 fewer students, that would be 0.33 percent, so, you know, I mean, three, three point three percent would mean what that is in terms of the decrease in revenues that you have from the state, okay, just so to illustrate what the, you know, predicament is.
Twelve students is 3.3 percent?
Yeah.
Our student body.
Student, approximately, you have 360 students, if we're generous here right now, 361, whatever it is, so. Then the next question, see, that, these are all ways to approach some of the same things, and in the aggregate, they'll be really helpful, the more you can answer, the better. The third one is, we, what's the board's goal for student-teacher ratio for FY16 specifically? Now, the vision talked about having at least one of the specifics of the vision was to have it, you know, within the state average, approximately the state average for student-teacher ratio. Well, you know, how, how do we get to that?
What is it now?
What is it now at Leland and Gray? I don't have it, it's, it's less than, I think it's less than 10. I have one that was reported by Frank last year, so, in fact, I had a chart that I put up, didn't I? I'll look it up, it just doesn't, I don't have what it is right now as we speak, is what I'm saying.
I'm just trying to see, I usually write it down.
Leland and Gray. You have 360 students about, isn't that what you have right now? You have 360 students, and the actual professional employee, FTE, is around 36 or 35.85 or something like that, 38.
But that's more, is that more than, that's teachers, or?
Yeah, that's just the professional staff. See, when you get to adults, that's why I put that thing in there about adults, because that's quite different from state. But, you see, it, you know, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is.
It was 10.5 in FY13, 10.2, this is all staff, all professional staff, not, not all staff, just teachers, 10.2 in FY14. I'm going to see if I have it for, for, you know, I probably do.
I don't, I don't think we have an FTE released, I was trying to find our total FTE.
Can I throw out another number?
Yep.
So I met with the Director of Special Education, and Leland and Gray is continuing the trend in the rest of the state in terms of the number of students who are eligible for special education has remained pretty much constant even as the population of the school has gone down. Last year, 15% of our student body was eligible for special education, and this year it's 19%. And all of that has significant cost implications, and I imagine that next year it'll be 20, 21%, according to the conversation that she and I had today.
Which follows statewide trend?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so let's keep going, I was still looking for that, but you've given the ratios latest that I would have, I haven't done one for FY15.
I'd probably have.
I haven't done one for FY15. I haven't done one for FY fifteen because it could be projected, but.
The last I heard was nine something, which stands to reason because it was ten-five, ten-two, probably nine-eight or something like that. We have been going in that direction.
What I'm trying to get at here is that I want to make sure that when I recommend a budget to the board, that it fits in with the plan to be where you want to be twenty-twenty. You know, it's like making up for lost time or making up for deficit. You don't want to pay it all off in one year necessarily. It may be a little too drastic, but we do need to make sure that I'm, that I'm, I want to make sure that I'm, you know, being really diligent regarding putting the decision and the recommendation about FY sixteen into FY seventeen, eighteen, nineteen in the future. And I don't think we've ever done that before. Well, I know we have done it before. What is the board's goal for student-employee relation, ratio? Now, that's when you talk about the state has an average of about five or six, something like that. That means we take all of our adults in the building, support staff, clerical and so forth, and you divide that, you know, spread that across the kids.
Are you looking for answers to these questions from the board tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what I, what, I'm trying to get us moving here, and I think we can all read these. These are, the three, four, and five are about student-teacher ratio, student-staff ratio. And I, I'm not sure we can answer those three tonight without having, you know, looking at the past and, and what. You know, we have some questions we probably need to ask about those. But I do think we could probably look at one, two, and six and give some direction to the administration. Am I right?
Is, is number four tied to the superintendent's, the cost for employees that this school sends to the SU?
Our budget has, it has, it's part of our budget, but it's not our staff specifically. We, we pay, it's a line item in our budget, the SU's, which includes whatever staff we use out of the SU.
I think what you're asking, Bruce, is that, so if a person's employed by the WCSU, but they work here, do they count on the ratio?
They don't.
It seems like we've sent a lot of responsibility to your office over the last few years.
Special ed.
Yeah, special ed.
For, for, if we're talking staff.
Special ed, budgeting perhaps, that's a few years prior to that, but there's money that goes that way for.
Information technology is another area.
Yeah.
That was this year.
Yeah, that's getting centralized. Yeah, that's true.
In terms of the increase, I should know this and I don't. What, what did we do with last year's budget? We, we did adopt a percentage for that.
We didn't give direction to the administration on a percentage. What we did was, we told them exactly what Baumann had said earlier, a fiscally responsible budget that met the needs of the students essentially. I'm paraphrasing. And then the, then the administration came to us with their proposal, and it was a three-point-eight percent.
Okay.
And the board, I think, well, I think we ended up with two-point-eight percent because there were some concerns about certain areas, and then they had a revised budget.
Revised budget was one-point-nine.
The first one was three-point-five or three-point-eight or something.
Yeah, and then we went down to two-point.
Then it went two-point-eight, right? And then it went down to, ended up being two-point.
And then when the budget failed twice and we revised the budget, we proposed, it was, it was either one-point-four, one-point-five percent increase, and then the board voted for it to be one-point-nine to reinstate the teaching positions.
And that's the one in the past.
Yes. That was our, that was our third round, because the second one had to come back the exact same amount. Because it was a petition.
So you're looking for an estimate, a percentage in this first question, aren't you? Or, or, yeah, number one.
Yeah.
We're just going out answers or we filling this out like a survey and handing them in?
No, we're making a decision as a board.
I think you have to make a, I think you have to make a public discussion of the issue and decide what target you want to give us. That, that really is, I think, the responsibility as a board.
Stephen, these percentage increase or decrease, you know, just to share, say like two percent, three percent, there's so much that goes behind it. You know, we have all these non-discretionary amounts that we have no control over. And if we say arbitrarily, yeah, we'd like to have an increase no more than one percent. Concretely, I don't know what that means. How many positions are going to be eliminated?
Well, I see, I'm not asking to prejudge what happens. I'm, I'm trying to make sure that when we bring back a budget, it first of all fits that criteria. Then the details of the budget about what the administration recommends to be cut or what happens in terms of programs is definitely the subsequent discussion about the budget.
In the past, we have given direction to the administration. Not, it's been, been a while since we've done it, but in the past, we've given direction to the administration by saying, we would like to level fund our budget. We would like to keep our budget increase. We know we're going to face an increase because we have an increase in staff salaries because we've already got a contract in place, so we'd like to keep our increase no more than one percent. We've given direction like that before to the administration. Lately, in the last number of years, we've been just saying, be, be fiscally responsible and meet the needs of the students. So I think he's asking us to go back in that direction.
Yeah, I think this is very sensible, what Stephen's asking.
Let me illustrate your point, though. Many people and a lot of boards realize that they don't have a lot of control over the expenses. And that's where the administration's put in a tough spot about, well, how do we reform the instruction or the allocation of personnel so we get, get things to happen? And it really, you know, the public has to realize that there's no shortcut to a reduced cost or sustaining level per pupil cost without reducing employee, employment, personnel. Your, Bud put this together for me. You have a six-point-nine-four-three million, six-point-nine-four-three budget. Okay, that's FY fifteen. If you take everything out of that budget that has to do with supplies and textbooks out of six-point-nine million, that's a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's textbooks and supplies. Now, you're talking about toilet paper, tissue, you know, everything else, okay? And that is two-point-one-five percent of your budget. Now, the reason why I was pressing, and I'm very grateful that we have a mission, I'm sorry, a vision and some specifics, is that it requires a great deal of, of discipline on the part of the democratic process to set a vision and then hold your administration, it's a public school, hold your administration accountable to present budgets that's going to get you there within the parameters that, you know, it's not hard to come up with fulfilling a vision if you have deep pockets and no limit on your expenses. So that's why this is the next part, the next foot that has to fall in order for us to have something happen.
Bobby. For myself, I think in having gone through what we went through last year and the discussions that we had last year about the budget, I think a level fund would be a responsible thing to do. And it would go along sort of with that article that, okay, we'll try to put a freeze. And it won't necessarily guarantee that the tax rate won't go up as last year.
In fact, you, you need to know it will go up.
Yeah.
Because we are having enrollment that's declining, so even, I mean, you know, we've been hearing it all over. Even if we level fund our budget, our tax rate will increase if our enrollment goes down. Mike?
And not only that, but I, I. Number two, I really don't care. I'm, I'm looking more at the state spending threshold. It puts us in the two-vote penalty box or whatever.
Yeah, per pupil cost, yeah, per pupil expenditure.
My number one goal would be to be below that number, whatever it comes out to be.
The spending threshold.
The spending threshold number. Whatever that percent turns into, and I don't know what that is. And ideally, and I have no idea how much excess work this is for y'all, but ideally, I'd like to see what the budget would produce for us as a school if it were funded at the same level or at minus two or at minus four. Because I feel more comfortable making choices if I knew what the hell it meant.
We've, we've talked about that in the past, and I don't, it's one of you, you know, the board can ask that if they want.
Yeah.
It's, it's asking a lot of the administration, I think, at this point in time. I, I still think that we can give them direction and let them have at it and say that we're not happy or we are happy with the budget we see as a graph.
They've done an amazing job in the last few years.
Yeah, they have, and if we have to ask for multiple budgets, it's multiple work. And I would, I would prefer we didn't ask multiple work out of them at this point if we can avoid it, that's all.
Well, I don't want to cut off the, the possibility. I, I mean, I think you have, I, I don't, I don't want to make up three distinct budgets. I think if you give us one target, it's pretty much going to be a heck of a lot of work to get to that.
We may change it.
Now, in the process of that, you may direct, after you review it, public hearings and so forth, and say, well, it's got to be down two percent. Okay, you know what two percent is. Two percent is a hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and forty thousand bucks. So you can, you know, you can figure out, it's, it's already way over what you have with textbooks and supplies. So you don't spend, you know, I mean, obviously, you're talking additional staff reductions, okay? And the, you know, the mode has been generally for maintaining employment. Not that that's been the intention, but that's been the practice in all my school boards and the SU in my opinion. And I think those days have ended.
I'll go to you, but I know you want to.
Oh, I just. I was just going to agree with Patty that, you know, and, and some, you know, I think level funding is the absolute most we could, most, you know, most we could do. I think there, I think politically, based on the articles and, and, you know, sort of what we've experienced last year and what we expect to come again, that it would be politically better for us going forward to find a number down. You know, I would say do no more than level fund and look for, look for a way to come in one to two percent down.
I, I just, all the talk I hear about the fact that we don't want to cut positions, we don't want to cut positions. I know, again, last year, it, I didn't find it appropriate, the timing, six o'clock at night to come out with a budget that cut positions. I thought that was lack of transparency in the timing. Otherwise, if the numbers say that you can't support these positions, you have to do what you have to do. So, and, but I don't really want to see whole programs go away either, so, you know.
Well, I think, you know, in the long run, we know we're going to feel the pain of no matter what. I mean, it, it's not going to be easy for us to support even a level-funded budget or, or one that's reduced. But I will say that we represent our communities, and we know best, at least of the people sitting in the room, which is all of us, what our communities can, can support. And I'm sure you've all had feedback from community members. We just have to do our best and, you know, hope we'll get support for it. The community, I, I, I mean, I don't know whether the board agrees with me, but I still believe fundamentally that the community sent us a message last year, for whatever reasons that anybody wants to say, you can read into it all you want, we'll never know the exact reasons why anybody voted no on our budget last year, but it still failed twice. And there may have been all sorts of, sorts of mitigating factors, but I still think it's a message, and I, I'm very conscious of that, and I want to be as responsible as I possibly can this year. I don't want to have to go through.
Can I have something?
Yeah.
I think that even with a level-funded budget, we may very well see our tax rates go up. So we can do our best to present a response, fiscally responsible budget. That doesn't mean it's going to be embraced and accepted. So I would not want to, what's the expression, to cut off our nose despite ourselves? So, I mean.
Agreed.
This is, this is going to be a complicated process, but we still have to do what we feel is right and not cater to what we think people expect from us.
I will agree with that absolutely, but I, but I think what I was saying, well, we know best about what our communities will support. I don't think communities vote no specifically on tax rates alone. I mean, they certainly look at spending increases. It's the first thing that you see on the.
They don't know the tax rate.
Well, you see, well, you don't know it for sure, any, nobody does, but you see it at the headline of every darn Reformer article, right? Leon and Gray's proposed budget is up by two-point-eight percent or one-point-nine or whatever. I mean, that's the thing that people see.
And the headline could be Leon and Gray chooses to level fund their budget this year for the first time since whatever. I don't know.
I would like to see the ratio, student-teacher ratio begin to change. And I think there's, that makes a big difference in the budget very quickly with, if it's one person or. I think we, in the next two years, we ought to bring it equal to the state required level. That's, that's a big amount, probably.
I guess one of the reasons why I wasn't, and I, I appreciate that, and I think it's important we have this conversation around student-teacher ratio because, you know, we've got to do it. But the fact is that if we decide to go with Patty's or Joe's suggestion on, you know, a, a direction to the administration about expenditures, that student-teacher ratio is going to change because you won't be able to do that without reducing staff, I don't think.
Well, either way, it's going to, it's got to happen.
Right, I guess I'm not.
I wouldn't want to try to tell the administration what to do.
Right.
They know better.
Right.
Yeah, but you.
What they can do within the constraints that we have defined. And if you can't do it with a level-funded budget and do it responsibly, that's good for the kids and good for the future of the school, then you can't. But if you can, you can, you know, but you wanted an idea of where to begin. But whether it's.
Is that a help, Stephen, to say level fund it? It doesn't seem to be.
Well.
Is that what? I'm sorry?
I've been asking you.
Any, any. Any direction you can stick to is good. You know, the problem that I anticipate is that the, the cuts that will be necessary, the adjustments that will be necessary to reach that target, I'm just probably preparing you for the amount of dismay that you will all feel when you see a budget with that, with that.
I don't think we'll be surprised.
And there are those of you, there are those of you who will want, you know, and feel comfortable with, with raising the amount.
Not necessarily.
Well, I'm just predicting, there are members of the public that who will, will, you know.
There might be, but.
Want to continue to support at whatever cost.
We won't necessarily change.
I come from a town that voted for a twenty percent increase in their tax rate, so I have no way of predicting what's going on with the public.
That's right, so there's no way for you to predict how this board, because this board doesn't know how they'll behave. But honestly, it, it, you know, we make decisions based on the information we have, and we're going to have to continue to do that. And if we give direction tonight to level fund the budget, and I'm not saying we've done that, we're going to have to stick with that. And if we don't stick with it, we have to have a good reason.
We have to defend that decision going forward.
But it is true that you have the ability to, 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 to look at the budget as proposed by the administration in November and contemplate what redirection is necessary. Because if the priorities that we have in the budget decisions do not match that of the board, that's one of the purposes of the vision statement, and try to get some greater clarity on that, then you need to redirect us because that is your responsibility to, to make sure that the budget is representing the public's priorities for education.
That's why I said, you know, if, if you don't feel, if when you've, everything's said and done, and you look at it and you start working on it and you say, there's no way we can follow the vision and level fund that's for you to know better than us, because you, it's your task to, to do both of those things somehow. And, and I don't envy you, and there's not enough money in the world.
In the young world.
But just, that's.
Yep.
So number six also, I think, is a question that needs to be answered.
That is a specific, that I, I, I do know that, um, what.
I'll give you my answer, all of it, okay?
Now, the deficit of three years.
We're talking sixty, sixty-five?
Yeah, sixty-seven thousand.
Yeah, I mean, if we put a number on it like that, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, me too.
Sorry?
Yeah, let's spread the penny now.
Well, well, we did that last year too and we ended up with another deficit, so I'm just, and, and we've already just approved something tonight that could potentially be deficit spending even though it isn't a huge amount, so.
Okay, well, let, let me propose, propose the question a bit differently. Rather than put an absolute dollar figure on it, because we're going to be able to get the audit, you know, specific and we may have it pinned down a little bit more, what are projected. See, the problem is that this present budget we're in does affect that, that accumulative, because in our present budget, we're paying seventy-five thousand back, you know? So, so the, the deficit that you see there or the negative reserve balance, negative balance is, hopefully will be reduced by seventy-five thousand. And that means you're going to have about maybe sixty thousand or something. That's only an estimate at this point, but I, I don't, I don't know. Now, if it is sixty thousand or whatever it is, based on our latest figures, do you want to try to pay back half of it? That's really what the question is versus all of it, okay? That's the two opinions I've just heard.
This is a very dumb question, because I don't understand it. What, the, the negative fund balance has been how many years?
Two years accumulative.
Two years.
Two years of accumulative.
And we're anticipating some sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars still needing to be paid at, in June. And so should, yes, so should it all be budgeted into FY16 or broken up into multiple years?
Oh, that's a good point.
We have deficit. Oh, absolutely. We're going to, can we take a recess?
Ran out of recess for thirty seconds. Ran out of video there.
The, the, the board will go into recess for a minute. Okay, we're back. Oh, we lost Lyndall. Yeah, so, um, yeah. Mike has to leave too, so I want to make sure we get to some direction on this. Patty, go ahead.
Can I make a motion? Without, I mean, we can talk about it still.
You certainly can.
Okay.
Make a motion anytime you'd like.
May I make a motion that we direct the board to, I mean, direct the administration to level fund the first draft of the budget?
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lyndall? Okay. Discussion, comment? I hope I'll get back in there before we vote, so please discuss. Go ahead, Bruce.
Does level funding mean that we're going to zero out the negative balance for the, yeah, the, the money that we owe? Number six.
I think that's.
I don't think we've, I don't think we've.
That's a subsequent, uh.
Yeah.
That's a subsequent discussion. You can go either way on that when you make a, make a decision on the sixty-five thousand or on the.
So it's not part of that level funding.
All we're saying is spending would be level, I mean, all Patty's motion, spending will be.
Next fiscal year.
Level fund.
How would we know if, or when would we know if that would keep us under the threshold?
Uh, well, I guess you'd be, you know, it, that's another thing that's pretty clear that you want to stay below that pupil, pupil, per pupil expenditure. And I can't, I can't predict that. The fact, if we really have twelve students less, that could have a pretty powerful effect on our per pupil cost.
Can I amend my?
Because it's about, because it's about three or four percent change in student enrollment.
Can I amend my, but will you know that during your budget? How would you account for that during your draft budget?
We, we have a pretty good sense. I mean, when Frank always put the budget together, he knew pretty much when he was presenting it to us the first draft, whether it would be under the spending threshold.
Yeah, that won't, that won't be too hard to project.
Can I add to my motion as long that, as long as that level funding keeps us under the threshold?
Right, you're trying to make sure the level funding doesn't.
It does enough.
Doesn't cause us to go over the threshold per pupil spending.
So she's saying level funding and keeping us under the spending threshold? Because.
Level funding.
May not.
Yep.
Right, but.
Which means that if it isn't under the, if it isn't meeting both criteria, we have to take the expenditure down lower than level funding, right?
Again, we've done this before, you can act, uh, uh, put it in as amendment to your motion or you can just do a friendly.
A friendly amendment.
And that will be up to Lyndall, whether she's comfortable with that piece too, are you? Okay, so the motion says, here it goes.
That we will level fund.
Direct the administration.
Direct the administration to level fund the first draft of the budget while keeping the budget under the per pupil threshold.
Per pupil expenditure threshold.
Per pupil expenditure threshold.
I think it's not spending.
It's a spending threshold.
Okay, and that was seconded by Lyndall. Any other comments or thoughts, discussion? Ready to vote? Slate? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Do you want to?
We're taking number six?
Do number six or not?
Yeah, I think you need to give us direction on that. First of all, how much of the negative fund balance do you want to make up in FY16? And, uh, that's, you know, five percent or all of it or half of it? And then you have to decide whether that's included in your previous measure.
Well.
It has to be in terms of per pupil expenditure.
I recognize what, that you, I recognize that you want that specific direction, but when the, this board, and I'm just going to, this is just my opinion, when this board, this board may not agree with me, but when this board has made a motion to direct you to level fund the budget, we don't really know what that's going to look like.
Yeah.
And I'm right now with Joe personally. I want to get rid of that whole deficit. I think that's responsible budgeting. But I'm not sure, once I see a level funded budget, whether I would want to see the whole thing in one year or to try to spread it out over a couple of years, as Mike was suggesting.
So you want to preserve that.
So I'm, I'm just saying, that's just me, you know, the board could make a decision that's totally different. Go ahead and give a motion, but Bruce.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the board asked the superintendent's office or the, the administrators to, uh, bring the negative funding balance to zero in this coming budget.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to get the negative fun, fund balance to zero. Comments?
Um, is there any reason why you want to do it in one year rather than two or three, given the, the other pressures that are going to be on the budget with the level funded and so on and so forth?
I think we're going to come up with the same problem next year, that there's going to be a, a, a lot of pressure to have another deficit and we'll just continue if we don't bring it to zero now.
You don't think that spreading it out over two years might make it a little less painful?
Well, I mean, what we did last time was we spread out a hundred and eleven thousand over two, over two years by taking a seventy-five thousand dollar whack at it and leaving ourselves behind the eight ball that, that little bit. And now we are going to add another thirty to thirty-five thousand to it this year. You know, we're still not taking as big a bite out of our budget, as big a bite as we took last year with the seventy-five, so we might as well just do that for the same reason Bruce said, you know, that there's going to be more of this. You know, the enrollment projections keep going down. We don't know what the pressures are going to look like next year. And we can always do, you know, if we say we want this done at zero and we look at the level funded budget and say, oh, man, thirty-five or forty thousand dollars would make a huge difference, it's a very easy place for us to say, let's spread the pain over two years and we'll only take half. But, you know, we might as well look at it with getting rid of that, because, you know, we may end up deficit spending again next year and, and start off again behind.
Well, just to put that right back, do you, why wouldn't we make a motion and make it mandatory that we eliminate that in one year?
We're not making it mandatory by that motion.
Yeah, what did I tell you?
Well, no, when he's giving, what he said, I mean, it's not mandatory because we don't, we vote on our budget. This board gets to decide what the budget is. I mean, Joe was right. I was just going to say that.
What was the motion, not to eliminate, to direct the administration to eliminate that deficit within a year?
Yeah, and so we're going to see a budget with zero, but we may not be satisfied with that budget.
We can amend. But at that point, it would be irrelevant, because that would be a separate directive.
Well, I would imagine there might be several separate directives. We, we very rarely pass a budget that's been handed to us the first time around without making modifications in it.
That's true.
And we almost always change at least one, based on either administrative recommendation after they've already recommended one or on our feedback. This is a draft budget. I mean, you heard what I said, but what Joe and Bruce are saying is also true. It doesn't, we still can do whatever. It's up to you.
I appreciate that. I mean, we have the option to put it back in.
Yeah, you can do it.
But, you know, sixty thousand dollars, that's a full-time position with benefits. And we're sort of adding that handicap on top of everything else. But that's how I'm seeing it.
I'm, I'm willing to change it after, I'm just saying, let's see it at its worst. You know, let's see, let's see what it looks like, you know, cleaning up the debt and going forward that way. And if we don't like it, we can always, we can always change it. But, uh, you know, that's just one way to draft it. We can do it the other way and, and, you know, pay very little of it and then say, oh, we got to bring it down, we got to fix this too.
Ooh, we could follow the example of our federal government.
Oh, no, let's not go there.
So, right, I mean, at some point, we do have to, oh, I'm sorry, but at one, some point, we do have to eliminate our deficit.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I still like having the wiggle room on the other side as opposed to having something that's on paper and not having that as wiggle room to say, ooh, you know, we need to take something else out or whatever.
Whether we prepare a budget with the, with the deficit entirely retired or not even addressed, we still have the same amount of wiggle room, it's just whether we wiggle up or down.
Well, up is harder than down. Wiggling up this year is going to be way harder than wiggling down.
So then we should put the whole thing in, because that's the wiggling that it'd be, that it'd be each year.
What's your preference for wiggling?
Well, there is a motion, so let's leave it.
Come on, Mike, you got to vote on this.
Got to vote.
Do I vote? You guys ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to retire the deficit in this budget, draft budget? Is that the right way?
Yeah.
Why are we worried about it?
Yeah.
Um, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, we have to have hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Okay. All those opposed? Four?
Five. Five.
There's five? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. It's, um, defeated.
Five to four.
Five to four.
I'd like to make a motion that we see fifty percent as a.
We try to reduce the, uh, the negative deficit by fifty percent, half of it.
Yes.
It's been seconded by Jeremy. Want to discuss it or you want to vote? Grade him up. All those in favor of the motion to reduce the deficit by half this year in this draft buzzer, budget, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Okay. Have we given you enough direction?
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm sorry, reduce the budget.
No, reduce the deficit.
Deficit by half.
We need to appoint two members of the WCSU negotiating committee.
Don't we have two already?
Well, I, I remind you who it is, but.
No, we don't have two already, because I'm not going to be able to do it this year, so someone else has to step in for me.
How about Bruce and Joe?
Well, how about we let people volunteer first? Does anybody, because we have new board members who may, I mean, I'd like to build, I'd like, I'd like to build capacity. Joe is, are you willing to just continue to do it?
I'm happy to continue and do it again.
So we do have one veteran who's, who's, um, willing to do it. Leland Gray appoints two people to the negotiations council, um, for, for negotiating our contracts at the S, at the SU level.
What is the commitment for that?
You've got to love, use some meetings.
No, it, it, we, we don't know. I mean, honestly, at this point in time, I, I almost considered doing it, because I was thinking, you know, in this up in the air kind of thing, maybe I would be, have time, but, you know, it could be three meetings.
Three years?
We, we, we just, we just, um, negotiated and settled two contracts, Joe and I did this year, both within one and two meetings. So, so that didn't take any time.
But this is the master agreement.
This is the master agreement, it'll take longer, I would think, but we have made, we, it depends on whether you're going to go one year, two years, three years.
Like what kind of space between the meetings is, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you may, you set your meetings at your meeting, so the first one would be, everybody would agree on, then you set your meetings, but typically, um, you know, once a month, I would say.
Once a month.
Once every three weeks or so.
There are children to schedule.
The last one had some long, had some delays. It, it did go on.
Is there value to having a visiting member of the board be on it? I mean, like Bruce's?
Uh, uh, no, I mean, there's value to having, um, there's value to having experience. Joe's got that experience, so it doesn't matter, any one of you could do it. The only, only ones who might not want to is if you had a spouse who's an employee in the SU, which makes Bruce unbelievable.
Nope.
Oh, that's right, she's retired, I forgot.
She's okay.
Gosh, I can't believe she retired. She's annoying. So, and sometimes, we, we've had a lot of teachers actually on the negotiating committee in the past, um, as long as they didn't work for our. Anybody willing? Volunteer?
Don't all jump at once.
It's great to learn how to do something, honestly. I love the connection.
A lawyer's a lot of fun.
Do we need a volunteer?
We should volunteer Paul for, he'll teach you to this summer.
Howie.
You mean Howie, because Paul's no longer on the board.
Or Harry, oh, yeah.
But ain't Paul no, not on the board?
No, no.
Not so smart.
That's why he's not here.
He's not as bad. Blame Twyla, she took his seat.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, I'm sorry. And Howie, I'll teach him.
Yeah, I know, named Howie, no.
My, my suggestion is that you won't be able to get Howie to do it, because he's, I mean, it, it's not fair to put somebody on. Howie's already struggling to make meetings.
I'm just kidding.
So, anybody else willing to do it? Well, you can send Joe alone, but I think you're, we're the only ones who get two.
We think about it, that's, it's like ten, fifteen at night.
Can we, can we, um, appoint you and then have you pull off if you want? I'd love to get two names on the list, that's all.
All right, you turn, put me on if I don't think that I can do it. I'll be, I'll be, I'll stay.
So Patty's willing to step in at the moment.
We do try to make the, uh, meetings accommodate the people, you know, the members of the team. There will be an initial meeting called, that'll just be the board representatives from the various school districts involved in the agreement. And I'll give you an idea of who they are. It's Joe and Patty, uh, from Brooklyn, New Fane, it's Dot and, and Ken, uh, from Wartsboro, it's Hal Smith, and from Townsend, it's, uh, Tricia Shine, and from, uh, Wyndham, Dover and Marver have all voted formally to decline and not join in the negotiations. join in the negotiations. I have to ask them to do that formally by, by law. And then Jamaica, I don't have it appointed yet. That'll happen next Thursday.
Have Wyndham, have those towns that declined, have they ever been part?
Wyndham is not, Wyndham, Dover and, yeah.
So, Bruce, you can make a motion for something to, if you want.
Yeah, let's make a motion, get it done, sorry.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that Joe and Patty be the new representatives for WCSU negotiations committee.
For the master agreement for teachers to.
For the master agreement for teachers.
Right. We may change it for you.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Tom and second it? Oh, oh, you ready? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Abstentions? She's not real. I heard her say abstentions. Okay, thank you, Patty, very much and if it doesn't work out, somebody else will have to step up, but.
It probably.
Okay, we have a consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved to approve and seconded by Patty. Joe motioned. Y'all set?
All set.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Bills and payroll?
Move to approve bills and pay orders in the amount of.
Go ahead. Patty, you want to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Anything you have any questions about, either of you?